This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen now come to order. Please rise with the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn, we yield to Pastor Erichner for a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in worship prayers. Father, we thank you so much for this day and receive it as a gift from your hands. God, we now ask your blessing, your guidance, your wisdom over these men and women who govern and lead our city. And, Father, for all of us to participate in this democratic process, may we always do so remembering the fruit of the Spirit, love and joy and peace and patience and kindness and goodness and gentleness and self-control. It's in your Son's name that we pray. Amen.
All right, you have before you a copy of the written agenda. I have a couple of proposed changes. First, we need to add the revision to the police bond issuance. You have it at your table. It was added to the E-Packet on Friday afternoon, but under our policy, it came in after the 12 noon deadline, so it needs to be added to the table. It is a technical change only, and it's due to the fact that the bonds were originally scheduled to be sold on July 7th. There are so many entities entering the municipal bond market right now that we couldn't get a scheduled sale for July 7th, so that sale has been scheduled for July 19th, and our bond documents need to reflect that. And the second proposed revision I have is to delete the request for a tax exemption for the Clayburn and Adelaide. We received a word from the attorney on the project that he's had something come up and he wouldn't be able to attend tonight. City Attorney feels it would be best if the developer's attorney could be present for that conversation. Do I hear any proposed revisions?
Um...
Mr. Mayor? Could somebody go ahead and add those revisions?
I'll add them.
All right. So, the proposed revision from Alderman Wynn is to add, under Mayor's Business, well, let's strike it first, is to strike Item B under Mayor's Business. That was the consideration of a new enterprise exemption for the Clayburn and Adelaide. Alderman Wynn, is that your proposed revision?
It is.
Do I hear any objections? Any objections? Seeing none, that matter has been deleted from the agenda. And Alderman Wynn, is it your proposed revision to add a resolution amending the resolutions adopted by the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi on June 7th, 2016?
It is.
As a new Item B under Mayor's Business?
Yes.
All right, is there any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, Alderman Wynn, do you have further proposed revisions?
I do. On page number four, Item 11D1, under Engineering, move that item under Public Appearances as an Item A, just out of a courtesy to Dr. T. Holloway, Assistant Superintendent of Education is here with us tonight and will be doing a presentation with our city engineer.
Proposed revision, Alderman Wynn, is to re-order the agenda placing what was previously Item 11D1, a presentation by city engineer and SOCSD Assistant Superintendent Dr. Toriano Holloway, as, do you want it at the beginning of Public Appearances?
Yes.
As the first item under Public Appearances. So, that would be Item A.
Uh-huh. Now, I have one more.
Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Please note the change to your agenda, Alderman Wynn.
Yes. Interim Human Resource Director, Mrs. Halbert, will you please come forward, please?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the board, this is in regards to personnel item Page 6, 11I5. Ms. Halbert, before I get to your request, you've made a request.
Okay.
Is it correct that I did email you regarding this item and asked for the salaries of all of the drivers in residential, commercial, and landscape in the sanitation and environmental service?
That's correct.
And you provided that to me. And I sent you a subsequent email after that asking where would this potential candidate go if he were approved by the Board tonight, and you told me that he would go into residential. Am I correct that you contacted me today and request to remove this item from the agenda today?
That's correct.
Will you state for the record to the Board why did you make that request?
Um, Mrs. Smith, he contacted me on today, and he declined the job, so I asked Alderman Wynn to remove it.
Okay. And let me say this for the record, I didn't in any way imply, insinuate, or request that you do this.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much. May I yield the floor at this time?
Do you wish to propose a revision?
Yes, I wish to remove that item from the agenda.
The proposed revision from Alderman Wynn is to remove Item 11I5 from the agenda. That is a request for authorization to hire William R. Smith, Philadelphia Position of Driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Alderman Wynn, is that your proposed provision?
It is.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? That item has been removed from the agenda. Alderman Wynn, do you have any further proposed revisions?
No, I do not at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, excuse me, I'd like to remove Item 11B2A from the agenda.
Proposed revision from Alderman Walker is to remove Item 11B2A from the agenda. That is the consideration of the second public hearing pertaining to the proposed ordinances to the code, proposed changes to the code of ordinances of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, specifically Appendix A, zoning, Article 7, District Regulations, Section T, Section 7.3 Building Form, Section 7.4 Building Use, and 8.4 Building Use. Alderman Walker, is that your proposed revision?
Yes.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? That item has been removed from the agenda. Alderman Walker, do you have further proposed revisions?
No.
Any further, Alderman Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion on something, and if this motion of the matter that I want to add gets a second, I would like to have just a very brief discussion on it, and I'm gonna explain this if I can get a second. I'm not for sure whether I will or not. If I don't, it'll just imply while I had it. But I want to add this item as Item Number C under Roman numeral 10 on the Board Business. And the reason I'm just now adding this matter is because after I got the agenda, which was well, you know, passed to that line, this precipitated, I wanted to add this because of a matter that is currently on the agenda. So, Mr. Mayor, the matter that I would like to add, often this is in the form of a motion, and if I get a second, I'd like to speak on it very briefly. And as the new paragraph C for Roman numeral 10 under Board Business, I'd like to speak to and add the consideration of the South Park Plaza lease agreement to, that's off that matter to be added to the agenda as paragraph C under Roman numeral number 10. That's in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
The motion made by Alderman Perkins is to add a new Item C under Board Business. That item would be the consideration of the South Park Plaza lease agreement. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Perkins, you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. This is the same exact matter that was on the agenda at the last meeting of this Mayor and Board of Aldermen. The gen item is worded exactly as was done at the last meeting. The sole purpose of adding this matter here tonight, Mayor, is that it is my opinion that there is a rational basis to approve of this matter. And the rational basis is, is tonight, under the Police Department, there is a matter to approve a lease agreement with Synergetics. In our last board meeting, the Board by a vote of, a majority vote, approved to spend at least $23-plus thousand dollars to do some renovations to this City Hall to accommodate the Police Department. And now, we're back tonight asking for another $10-plus thousand dollars to further house the Police Department. And I want the record to be crystal clear that the Vice Mayor fully supports the Police Department, and I think all the taxpayers and residents of this county and area know that. But the offer that we have is my understanding that this offer is still a viable offer. The offer still stands. The offer is still available to the city. So, the lease agreement that we have from the property on it, the South Park Plaza, actually, you know, gives us the city greater privacy than the lease agreement from Synergetics. If you look at Paragraph Number 12 in that lease agreement from Synergetic, it, the paragraph of reentry allows the landlord to re-enter for inspections upon reasonable notice to the tenant and for repairs and alterations whenever is necessary. That is the language. So, and the Chief of Police mentioned at the last meeting that we've been in this lease agreement with Synergetics since 2006. So, the lease agreement that is available to the city with the South Park Plaza lease agreement, that clause states with tighter language that the landlord can only enter the premises if there is a violation of the lease agreement and provide that the lease agreement is canceled, or if the tenant abandons the lease premises. So, with that language, there is no legal means or legal avenue for the landlord to come in. And I've had a number of constituents and others throughout the city really applaud the measure of approving this lease, and they said, "Well, Vice Mayor, if you really look at it," so what it means, you know, of course, I know the opinion's different, but I don't see any rational basis to deny this lease agreement, you know? And, of course, and constituents been keeping up with the news around this city. They mentioned that, well, the city accepted the Police Substation in Ward 7 on Afro Perkins Street without any discussion. You know, there was no problem, and everything's worked out well over there. We haven't had any security breach, no privacy issue, no privacy problem. We went on down South Starkville and went on to another ward, Ward 2, and there was no problem. And so, well, you know, well, the constituents said, "Well, Vice Mayor, well, what rational basis is, if any, is there to deny this lease agreement? Let's just get down to the bottom line. What really is it, Vice Mayor? I mean, you're the lawyer, I mean, you know, I mean, just tell me what you think. I know you read the lease agreement, you've been up there since 1993. What's going on with this thing?" I say, you know, just straight talk with you, just like I always am. It's just a pure business decision. It's just a matter of whether or not the Board wants to get free viable space that is office-ready, you know? And I say, you know, "I'll just offer this again tonight, and I'm gonna do my job, and I'm gonna do what I'm asking." I say, you know, "I may get voted down, but I'm gonna do what's right." I mean, this, you know, when I, of course, I'm sure everybody's trying to do their job, and nothing personal about this. I mean, I'm just talking straight, I'm not casting any blame to anybody. I'm just being, it's purely professional. I'm not, you know, I respect everybody's vote. I've been doing that since July 6, 1993, and I tell you the truth, I enjoy this job, and you, I've been voted down a number of times since July 6, 1993, and my feelings have not gotten hurt yet. And they not gonna get hurt tonight and no other night. I tell you, I just take my job so seriously, I mean, I just enjoy this. And why I enjoy it? Because I enjoy representing the people. But one thing that the Vice Mayor would do, I'm sure all of us try to do this, but I'm gonna do the right thing. I'm not gonna hold no hatred against anybody, and not saying anybody's doing that. I'm not saying that, I'm not implying that. But I just wanna make sure, I mean, I'm not voting for a person, I'm voting for this property because it is office-ready. The Mayor made it clear the other night that this is about a $15,000 savings to the city, so why keep throwing money, you know, for leases? I mean, what does Synergetics, we appreciate Synergetics, what they have done since 2006, but why keep throwing money at Synergetics? We have a trillion of infrastructure matters and other matters that we need to take care of. All of our wards need attention. You know, all of our wards do, and I'm not, you know, I'm just talking straight, I'm talking to the general public, I'm not being negative against anybody. I respect all my colleagues, I respect the Mayor, the City Attorney, I'm not, look, this is not geared to anybody. My heart is clear, my conscience is clean, I feel good. But the bottom line is, this is purely a business decision. So, I've searched my heart, I've searched my soul, Vice Mayor, is this the right thing to do? Why would I vote against a space that's office-ready, approximately 1,500 square feet? Ready, parking, very good, strong legal language. Free. Free. Police substation, free, on Afro Perkins. Police substation on Lewisford Street, free. What is wrong? I challenged anybody, like I said last meeting, there's nothing wrong with accepting this viable space. And the only reason I'm bringing this back tonight is, it wasn't my intention to bring this back, but the reason I'm bringing this back, not because of the Vice Mayor, and this is the only issue I'm gonna speak on tonight. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm, you know, I may have some different votes than others, but it's all I'm gonna speak on, unless I'm just called to speak on something. The spirit hits me to speak. But the bottom line is, this is the right thing to do. Why are you gonna vote against something that's office-ready? You wanna spend the lease dated July 1, $950 a month, and, you know, they project the Police Substation, I mean, the Police Department not to be ready until mid-April 2017, that's another 10 months, maybe 11 or 12, given how the construction works, and, you know, and we got to run the, all other things to it, and that's gonna be over another $15,000. Why pass this up? Why pass this up? I mean, you know, why pass this up? Mr. Mayor, as I get ready to close, I just wanted to take the time, you know, for, just say these words to the public, that I just don't understand and am aware of, and I'm just talking aloud to the public here, why, what rational basis? What justification? I mean, the legal standard is rational. What reason do you want to deny this space? I mean, if you were looking for a space, if you're running a business, and someone donates you some viable space, and all you gotta pay is utilities, electric, water, sanitation, and you got a good lease agreement so they can't re-enter, and you fully protected under the lease, would you, would you, Mr. John Q. Public, walk away? Put yourself in that position. What would you do? In other words, if you were in a business, and somebody offered that space to you, and you really need space, and you got to pay $950 a month, now just put yourself in that position. I want the press to get this right. Listen to this now, if somebody offered that space to you, and you're protected, they can't re-enter, unless you abandon the lease premises, unless the lease is canceled, unless you violate the lease, if you do your job, the landlord cannot come in. If the landlord come in, what do you do? You take him to court for breach of agreement. And who wins? The tenant, in my opinion. So, you got all that clear. You don't pay any security deposit, you got plenty of parking. So, what would you do, members of the public? You don't have to answer, but what would you do? Ladies and gentlemen, I submit to the general public that there is no basis of any type, kind, manner whatsoever. Now, this motion may fail, but I was elected to make the case for the people. Now, again, you know, I mean, however this vote goes, I tell you, when I leave here, as I told my colleagues throughout the years, I'm going to 620 Hospital Road and have a good night when I leave here. My feelings will not be hurt. So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm gonna yield, giving you the floor on this, and these gonna be my remarks for tonight. And there's no ill will against anybody, but I was just charged with my taxpayers, with my spirit, my mind, my thinking, my forethought, and my oath to represent my constituents. I just wouldn't feel comfortable if I did not speak this. Now, of course, let me say this last thing, if this motion fails, I'm not gonna vote for the Synergetics, and that's not because of ill will, no grudge or animosity I have. The reason I'm gonna vote for it, against it, when it come up, because I don't think it's the right thing to do. I'm not gonna seek the floor for any recognition, so that's where we are, and so, again, very briefly, I just want to say those things, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take that time, I think the public need to hear that, and these gonna be my comments for tonight. And, Vice Mayor, I don't need to seek any more recognition tonight, just, I mean, I'm doing good, but I need to say that. I need to take the time. Sometimes, just like, you know, you just have to take the time out to say things. You can't rush through everything. I mean, just like when you're at church and community meeting, you got to take time to do your job. When I go to court, I have to take time to represent, so I can get the best outcome, so the judge can be clear, so the jury can be clear. So, that's what I want to do. Now, I feel good now, Mayor, I'm done, I'm excited, I'm excited, thank you.
Mayor, may I be recognized, please?
Alderman Wynn.
Okay, just, Mr. Clemens, will you please come forward, please? If you will, I just sent over a document to your email, will you please pull that up for me? I didn't even bother to place a subject. And I don't know how we got here tonight, but let me say a couple of things, and I will try and turn this as gingerly as I possibly can. This is not a measure that I will be supporting tonight. I stated last, a couple of weeks ago, that I would not support it. Based on the constituents of Ward 2 that I represented, and I will not walk away from the beliefs and failures that they have for me not to support this, I cannot support it, will not support it, and let me state a couple of facts. On July 2nd, five members of the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Carver rendered a motion, seconded by Alderman Little, and in that motion, it was not to reappoint the person that owns that property, that being Mrs. Sproul. The Vice Mayor for the City of Starkville was one of those five voters to that. Again, I will not support it. Ms. Sproul has perhaps alienated Board members simply by the fact of, you know, a lot of things have been done, but factually, four investigations from the Ethics Committee has been done against the eight elected officials for the City of Starkville. Is there any supporting document, documentation that we have for this motion that the Vice Mayor, this agenda item that he has placed on here? Are there any type of supporting documents? Because I didn't see it in my packet, and this is just new at the table. But if you will, Mr. Clemens, will you pull that up?
I'm working on it. Let me see if I can get it quickly on the laptop.
Just a moment. You can't, we gonna send it over again. I still have the floor, I have not yielded and will not be doing so at this time. I realize that elections are next year. Alderman Ward 2 name will be on the ballot, on the municipal ballot for the City of Starkville. I'm not trying to please anybody. I don't care who thinks somebody is gonna run against me, who thinks somebody is gonna put somebody in the race, I'm not pleasing anybody. Like the Vice Mayor just said, he loves this. I love representing the people of Ward 2, hear from him often. The last board meeting, I was inundated with telephone calls that morning, thanking me for the work that I do on the city. I absolutely enjoy it, just like he does. Mr. Clemens, do you have it?
Do you want it projected?
Yeah, if you don't mind, put that up for me. Let me say this, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board. Again, I won't be supporting this tonight, but what I can say, Ms. Sproul has on her sign, she says, "Commercial space available." It say, can you enlarge that for me? Thank you. Zoom in on that bottom part, and let me say this, I had no clue, much as I drive by there, wanted to pay any attention. I thank one of my Alderman colleagues for sending that to me. It says, "Commercial space available." It say, "Win, win." If we don't do this, she still wins, she can rent it out. She's gonna get some money off of it because she donates it to the city. She's not gonna get any money. I don't know about you all, but I'd rather have some income coming up. So, I had said that, in the words of Ms. Sproul, "Commercial space available." It's a win, win. And my last name being Win, I understand what that name means. It means that you win, and it's the opposite of lose. And my name, in case when you win, is spelled W-I-N, but when you're me, you spell it W-Y-N-N. It's four letters, it has no vowel, and it does not spell another word, but it always win, and it's what everybody wanna do, win. And Ms. Sproul clearly says that on her sign. Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board. I yield the floor at this time.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Perkins' motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. All those abstaining, please signify by raising your hand. The vote...
I think we don't have enough information to make that call tonight.
All right, so the vote is 3-3 with one abstention. That means I get to break a tie, and I vote yea. So, the motion passes, and the consideration of the South Park lease agreement has been added to the agenda.
Mayor?
Alderman Perkins, do you have any further proposed revisions?
No, Mayor.
Mayor?
Alderman Carver?
Since we don't have any supporting documentation, I'd at least request somebody from the staff go and provide some copies.
We can do that. Tammy, could you grab it, probably the easiest place that it's available, it was on the last meeting's agenda? Could you pull it from the...
Do we have any cost estimates or as far as any kind of modifications to be made from the chief? I know he's not present tonight. Any kind of cost estimates as far as any sort of modifications might have to be done, if any?
Uh, no.
Mr. Mayor, we can bring the prompt up.
Yeah, make, Ken?
Thanks, Tammy.
All right, so Alderman Perkins had yielded the floor. Are there any further proposed revisions? We still haven't adopted an agenda yet. Are there any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Any further proposed revisions? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Sir?
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Perkins, you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
I've got one more thing to say. Obviously, this is a lot of hypocrisy going tonight. You know, we set these dead, hard deadlines, let's do it or let's not do it, because if it's political in nature, that's fine, but just get it set before we get here, so that everybody's got the supporting documentation from both sides. We've got some Aldermen that it's their pet peeve, and yet they're putting it back on there, and I'm fine. We can have the discussion, no skin off my back, but let's just make sure we hit those deadlines. If not, let's not have a deadline, one of the two. We gotta pick it and go with it. Thank you.
Mayor, one comment?
Alderman Wynn.
I'm very disappointed at this, but what I'll say, and I'm gonna say it out loud, I'm not afraid to vote my conscience, my convictions, despite that my name will be on the municipal ballot next year. And what I know this, the God that I serve, and as rich as Ms. Sproul is to be able to buy in a house she want, travel anywhere, and eat any kind of food, she doesn't have enough money with the God that I serve to buy hell to put me in. May I yield the floor?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I have six in favor with one against. By a vote of six in favor with one against, the motion passes. The next matter before you is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of the May 17th, 2016, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, incorporating any and all changes recommended by the City Attorney as presented. Discussion. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the amendments of the May 17th, 2016, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, incorporating any and all changes as recommended by the City Attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits? Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion clearly passes. The motion clearly passes.
Thank you so much.
That will take us to announcements and comments by the Mayor and members of the Board. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Herman Peters to come forward and brief the Board and the public on our annual Fourth of July fireworks show, which will take place before our next board meeting. Mr. Peters?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board. Our Fourth of July event is going to be on the Fourth, Monday. We have live music by a group called Cruise Control, and the Happy Arnold Singers will be there. There's a challenge this year for our departments who would like to participate. It's going to be the Running Man Challenge. Who's going to participate that night? And I don't know how to do it myself, so don't ask me how to demonstrate it. Back by Papa the Man, we have the group dancing that we did last year. We have Free Hot Dogs by the Tea Party, ice cream by Mr. Arnold. Different political parties were set up. The jumpers would be at six. The fireworks would begin when it get really dark, which is usually around nine o'clock. I want to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department in advance, because they've always helped out, and I know they're going to do a great job with this this year. Also, Mayor, I want to thank everyone for their participation and helping with the big baseball tournament we had. It was really big. Two weeks ago, the last, this one, weekend passed, it was canceled, they were scared of the weather. Also, we have one coming up this weekend. It's going to be pretty big, and the kickball tournament is going to be going on at the same time. So, you know, Lynn Lane is going to be busy again this week. Also, next week, we have the State D- D- Z- Dean Baseball Tournament, and it's going to be busy again on Lynn Lane. So we ask you, Board, to continue. Thank you for your support, and thank you, and this is our report for Fourth of July and the events that we have coming up.
Are there any questions or comments from the members of the Board? From Mr. Peters? Alderman wins.
I would be remiss if I didn't say anything, because I represent that ward. I ask everyone, please bring your family members visiting from out of town, your lawn chairs, and let's join Mr. Peters and his members of his staff and have a great time like we did last year, whether you're going to listen to Mr. Arnold singing, and the music that you had last year was great. I hope that you'll do that again this year. So I look forward to seeing everyone. Thank you so much. I yield the floor.
Alderman Maynard.
Mr. Peters, for these big tournaments, will we have a staff member present during those times? Do I hear any issues?
We do there. There, there. We have staff members there throughout the day. We rotate.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further questions, comments from the members of the Board? Thank you, Mr. Peters. Next, I would like to recognize the members of the Youth Summer Work Program that weren't able to be present in our last meeting. At this time, could our youth summer workers please stand? Thank you very, very much for participating in the program this year. It is our hope that not only we have an opportunity to earn some extra money this summer and learn some job skills, but that you will take pride and satisfaction in contributing to the life of your city, and know that you are a part of what's going on in the City of Starkville. And we hope you have a wonderful summer. Thank you. Finally, I would like to announce that our charrette on the 182 corridor is literally ongoing. And as we have this meeting right now, the second night of that charrette is underway. Tonight, they're having a concept plan presentation. Now, I was able to attend last night. Last night was the beginning. It was the visiting session where we started with a brainstorm of ideas. All day long, the consultant team has been working to organize those ideas, and they'll have a rough presentation tonight. All day tomorrow, whether you have participated or not to this point, this would be an excellent time to start participating. They will have that rough concept plan up, and the doors will be open for anyone to come in and make comments for revisions on that rough concept. And the program will conclude with a 6:00 P.M. presentation on Thursday. I encourage you, if you have some time this week, to attend. That concludes my comments this evening. Are there any comments by the members of the Board of Aldermen? Alderman wins.
Mr. Montgomery, will you please come forward? Yes. Good evening. Mr. Montgomery is the, is the person at Starkville Daily News, the reporter that covers the members of the Board and the Mayor and our city government. On last Thursday, you did an article in the newspaper titled, "Starkville Honor by MML." Thank you so much for your coverage on that, and we'll receive that award when we're down there next week on the coast. But what I want to say thank you so much for, you did a subsequent article on that, and it's Alderman pushed for certifications, and it was in yesterday's newspaper. Thank you so much for doing that. Five members of the Board, four, Alderman Little, Alderman Carver, Alderman Walker, and Alderman Maynard will receive their basic CMOs while we're on the coast, and I'll receive my advanced CMO while we're on the coast, and Alderman Carver, and along with myself, will serve as moderators to two different classes there on the coast. So I just wanted to say thank you so much yesterday for this article. Thank you. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Are there any further comments by the members of the Board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments at this time. And if any citizen wishing to make comments, may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Hi, my name's Ann Birchfield. I'm sure you all was acquainted with me. Hi, Aldermen's in the, I would like to present this issue that happened on Roundhouse Road. Oh, we have it probably with the sewage area out there. You can smell it, and you turn your air conditioning on, the smells come all the way in your house. And it's just, it's been there next for about 20 years or so. So I would like to know what, what type of issue, what type of thing can I take to prevent that, prevent the sickness and inhale and all of that that's just not suitable for your health?
We will discuss this at our staff meeting tomorrow, and once we've had an opportunity to assess the situation and see what may be causing it, somebody from the city staff will be in touch with you to let you know what we found.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Listen to the Mayor and Board. My name is Avon Ton, Ward Seven. I'd like to recognize the Vice Mayor, Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Ton.
Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Al.
I'm just 130 pounds soaking wet. But, uh, my mom told me a long time ago, "Son, if you can be in the public, have respect." Fifty-six years later, I tried to do what I can, don't want to hurt mom. Citizens, it's getting to the point where they are sick and tired of people trying to destroy each other. We see the issue that's going on in Columbus. We don't need that here. We don't need a bad reputation. So, the Mayor and Vice Mayor need to respect. They don't need to be, feel like they're they, uh, and not respect. We, we have issues also with, I don't know what Jackson is doing about the drinking thing, but we had two issues. I don't know if they passed a law, or whatever, maybe somebody can help us on it, but we had two people trying to get on the bus with open container. Uh, we need to get a understanding on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances, and we now have three public appearances scheduled. The first public appearance is by Dr. Toriano Holloway and City Engineer Edward Kip to present proposed changes for Green Street.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, Board, Vice Mayor. Really appreciate Dr. T. joining me tonight. He also has a school board meeting tonight where they're reviewing the budget, having a budget workshop, and it starts at 6:00 o'clock, so I know he really appreciates him being moved up on the agenda so he can run over and do that. I am delighted that he joined me today, and I wanted him to be here to answer any questions that you all may have about the programmatic elements of the school and kind of how it's going to function on a day-to-day. But I wanted to brief the Board about a proposal to, to address some of the traffic issues that are coming on Green Street and this supporting, in this surrounding area. As you all may know, Overstreet School, starting in early August, will be now the fifth grade school for at least two or three years until the, the new school is built. And it is not operated as a grade school for several years, and this is going to kind of change the traffic pattern over there. Also recognizing that Green Street, Jackson Street, Montgomery Street are also very established neighborhoods, and we are trying to do our best to respect those neighborhoods and maintain the integrity of those neighborhoods while also providing the functional traffic needs that the school district has, specifically in the morning, the evening, during pickup and drop-off. So I'd like to just run through the proposal, and please stop me at any, any time along the way if you have any questions. For most of you know, there is a dedicated drop-off lane off of Jackson Street. In the past, this used to be the location where vehicular traffic would pick up and drop off in the morning and afternoon. It is proposed right now that this would be bus only on Jackson Street. All the buses would line up in a northbound direction, and they would use this drop-off lane for bus traffic only. It, we're projecting around 20 buses or so at the, at the maximum peak time, so there may be some backup to Gillespie or so, depending on how quickly they, they can go through there. But I feel like Jackson Street is, is capable of handling that, as it has a center turn lane, there's also a dedicated bike lane, and there's plenty of room for vehicles to go around the buses if they do stack up all the way to Gillespie. Now, that would take care of the bus traffic. The other thing that we will need to address is the vehicular drop-off in the morning and the pickup in the afternoon. And what we're proposing is that all traffic for pickup and drop-off will come off of Montgomery Street. So either from, either from the north, will turn right, or the south, or come straight across Green Street, coming from the east. These, the, the drop-off and pickup area is right here. There's a concrete drive that they have recently constructed, and it's a horseshoe shape right here. So that will allow the, the vehicles to queue all the way up in this long span right here, and we feel that that is going to be sufficient to, and hopefully not extend all the way out into Montgomery Street, and that that will be sufficient queue lane. So the vehicles, once they come in and drop off, they'll have the option to continue to Jackson Street and turn right or left. Of course, there will have to be some traffic control to allow the vehicles to not have any interaction with the buses there, but we feel like that intersection will remain open from the buses. The other option is they can do a U-turn if there's no traffic coming on this eastbound lane and go back toward Montgomery to that intersection, depending on what the, what the traffic wants to do. Now, Green Street is wide enough to also accommodate on-street parking. There is a good number of residents who currently use on-street parking on that, on that street, and right now, they kind of park wherever. I mean, it's some park on the north, some on the south, and you kind of just navigate through Green Street. It's, actually functions very well right now, and the traffic speed is not an issue that I'm aware of. However, we do need to bring a little bit more order if we're going to have two lanes of traffic as well as the parking. So we're proposing all the parking being on the south side of the street. We're anticipating between 20 and 25 spaces. At each intersection, you'll also notice that there's a left turn dedicated lane as well as a right or a straight, depending on which intersection. That's going to help alleviate traffic at each of those intersections and prevent one car that wants to turn left from backing everything up. Now, Dr. T. and the school district has, is, is going to provide a school resource officer at this intersection, and we all believe that this is going to be the critical point to make, making everything work, is at Montgomery and Green. That is where all the vehicles are going to be coming from, and I would anticipate that's where a lot of the cars that leave will be heading towards as well. So that school resource officer will be there in the peak morning and afternoon times, probably about 30 to 45 minutes, depending on that window, and they will actually direct traffic to allow the, the traffic to flow and to flush out as necessary. What we would like to do is go ahead and stripe the roadway as it is, implement these potential recommendations, and then say, maybe a month or so after school starts, once all the kinks get worked out, we provide a traffic study of this intersection in particular, but we might as well go ahead and study Jackson as well, to see exactly what the traffic patterns are going to do. We don't, we don't really know how many left turns are going to occur right there, but what we do know is the signal that is currently there is inoperable. It's beyond repair. It's one of the oldest signals in town. As I understand, the electric department has duct taped that thing back together and no longer can buy parts. So we don't know exactly what that traffic study will recommend, but what we would like to do is provide that, collect that data, do that analysis, and bring that recommendation back to the Board at a later time, once we've had a chance to really analyze what the traffic patterns are going to do, once both the, the elementary and high school traffic, as well as Mississippi State traffic, is kind of fully, fully geared up. So with that, I will definitely open up, and, and Dr. T. here, if there's anything that you want to add to that.
On that, that parking, we cleared out some area in the back, so no teachers, no teachers, all of this, we cleared it out, so nobody will be parking for us on that side of the street as well. We put a lot into it. Bus traffic, we anticipate getting six buses in there. We staggered the start times for Overstreet, so the traffic with buses won't back up down Jackson as far as we originally anticipated. We pushed them back about five or six minutes, so I don't think we'll end up with buses out here, which will allow some turns from right here. So a lot of brainstorming and going back and forth, but I think we've got a good plan. We appreciate your support on this.
Alderman Maynard. Edward, do you plan on striping the parking spaces?
We would like to. I, I mean, we, I think it would probably bring a little bit more awareness that that is parking. But do you have any strong opinion either way?
I'd like you to, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's the will of the Board. With that, Mayor, I move approval of the proposed striping plan for Green Street and authorization for the city engineer to proceed with a traffic study at the intersection of Montgomery and Green, as well as Jackson and Green, to occur during the two months of school and report back to the Board with those findings and recommendations for long-term traffic control based on the updated vehicle counts. Could you pass that document to the city clerk? Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard, it's been read and reduced writing without objection, although I'd ask for it to be reread. Seeing none, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks for working.
Next, we'll have a presentation by Jamie Bachmann, a volunteer Starkville. And Ms. Bachmann, you will have a maximum of 10 minutes to make your presentation. I ask that you remain for any questions or comments the Board may have, once you have completed your presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity just to come and update you on our past six months of services for this community and events that we posted during our fiscal year 2016, which started in November, so I'm reporting on November 2015 through May 2015. Just going to highlight our annual days of service events, our ongoing services for nonprofits and volunteers on a six-month report databases, and what we have coming up this fall. We started the fiscal year, as always, with Family Volunteer Day, celebrating the power of families who volunteer together, supporting their neighborhoods. We did our annual sweet potato drop with a partner, through a partnership with Society of St. Andrews and the Marine Volunteer Center, engaged 104 volunteers that bagged 26,000 pounds of donated sweet potatoes from a farmer in Vargamon, and those benefited 14 food pantries in the area. pantries in the area, serving approximately 2,500 bags of sweet potatoes among those food pantries. In Christmas, we always just try to engage youth with our Christmas Greeting Card Project, working with Ward Stewart. 670 greeting cards were generated through their art program, and those went to elderly and sick in the community around Christmas time, just to cheer them up. So elderly in local nursing homes, hospices, the hospital, and so forth. We had kicked off the new year with Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. Very excited that we saw a great growth of this Day of Service. We got great support from the university, partnering with the Holmes Cultural Diversity Center, partnering with the NAACP, Octavah County Chapter in the community, and several other organizations, including many of our nonprofits and the Marine Volunteer Center. Normally, we engage about 150 volunteers on this Day of Service, maybe among five different service sites, and this year, we had 24 service sites, local nonprofits, and a total of overall, between the Day of Service, our Volunteer Fair, and an event hosted with the NAACP, A Night of Unity, we engaged 440 volunteers and 2,170 service hours. Basically, we kicked off that Day of Service on that Sunday evening, the 17th, with a night of unity. It was a joint effort among NAACP with the community, with the university, the Marine Volunteer Center, and Volunteer Starkville, and it was just a wonderful night of discussion. We had a great speaker on Dr. King, followed by small group discussion, and very diverse groups, and then we shared a meal. And then, the next day, we picked up with our Day of Service and the Community Volunteer Fair. We engaged 420 volunteers that day, 2,100 service hours, working from anywhere at Knoxby Refuge to the Boys and Girls Club, with any projects that our nonprofits had requested volunteers for. Lastly, we partnered with the Starkville Rotary Club for our New Mom Supply Drive. That benefited the Emerson Family Resource Center, collected 278 supply items that benefited moms who might not be able to afford all the supplies their baby needs during their care, and $230 cash to support those program needs. National Volunteer Week during April, always a fun time, because it's always about recognizing people in our community and recognizing the service spirit. We hosted our third annual Operation Gratitude letter-writing campaign, which saw significant growth from last year. Our sixth annual Volunteer Awards banquet, give award nominations, which we were very, our community was well-represented in Jackson during National Volunteer Week, and our Volunteer Spotlight Blog. With our annual writing campaign, we had a lot of new partnerships among schools in Clay County and in Octavah County, as well as community groups. 888 letters were written and 782 patriotic drawings, all which were sent to Operation Gratitude, which is the national nonprofit that sends care packages to deployed troops. Total of 1,585 volunteers with 1,169 service hours. Our annual Volunteer Awards banquet, this is always fun, just because we get to celebrate people that are doing outstanding service in our community. We recognize a total of 85 individuals and 29 community groups with either a Volunteer Spirit Award or an Excellence in Community Service Award among three levels, based on their number of service hours performed in 2015, and four distinguished awards. And then the Give Awards, which are the Governor's Initiative for Volunteer Excellence. It's through the Governor's Office in Volunteer, Mississippi. These are very prestigious Give Awards. We nominated Rose Coffee Graham and Ruth De La Cruz. We also had a nomination for Paul Quickie from the community. Rose Coffee Graham received Outstanding Service in Strengthening Families. She was one of 14 Give Award recipients, and Ruth De La Cruz received an honorable mention. I didn't mention Mr. Paul Quickie, because he wasn't my nominee, but he received an honorable mention as well. And so we had two of the seven honorable mentions from our community. Very well represented for Starkville and Octavah County and Jackson. And then, our fourth annual Touch a Truck event. Very excited that I was not a month further in my pregnancy, because I don't think I could have survived that day, but we had great community support from the city and the county, and all the people that attended saw significant growth in this event as well. We went from 425 participants last year to 534 children participating, 900 in attendance overall last year to 1,407, 36 vehicles on display, and total matching funds for our Volunteer Generation Fund grant in the amount of $29,698.82. And this event four years ago was about 11,000 in matching funds, so I'm very pleased with the growth of it. And it very much helps us look competitive, when I can say that we're going to match so much to our grant each year, and so this is just unbelievable support from the community. And then, these are just some photos. Of course, all the city departments participated again, and we greatly appreciate all approving those in-kind services from the city. And all the employees were wonderful with the children. We could not have asked for a better group of employees working that event. And then our new program, really trying to get more into volunteer leader training. We've had our nonprofit training program up and going, and now we're really focusing on training for leadership when it comes to volunteerism. And we have a new youth program we piloted. It went really well, and we'll be doing it again this year. We engaged 17 high school students in a five-month program where they were not only learning about different things that would help prepare them for applying for college, or preparing their resumes and so forth, but also teaching them the steps to identify community need and address it through service on Global Youth Service Day. This group of students worked together over a five-month period, and they planned a service project that they fully implemented. They actually did a program brought to the Hahn County Relay for Life at Starkville Christian School, where they did a health presentation on five types of cancer and preventative measures that can be taken, and it was, uses a health lesson for grades six through ninth, I do believe. And those are just some pictures of their planning sessions, them working on their projects, and then them presenting. So excited to, most of our students came from Starkville High School, and we had one student from Starkville Christian. Excited to see that program kick off, will be taking applications in October, and so forth. In addition to the community events that we do on National Days of Service, we also volunteer Starkville heads up ongoing services for nonprofits and for people in the community wanting to volunteer. We've served 168 nonprofits this past year with assistance for volunteer recruitment needs, provided 135 nonprofit representatives and volunteers with volunteer management, capacity building, training. We've engaged 3,030 volunteers so far in our annual Days of Service events, and together, reported with our nonprofit partners, Volunteer Starkville and the Marine Volunteer Center, we have reported 19,289 volunteer engagements in a six-month period. Last year, we had 25,000, so we are making great progress just in six months, and 125,500 volunteer hours, a value of $2,448,008, based on the 2015, 2015 value on volunteerism for Mississippi, which is 1951 per hour. And just what we have coming up, when I get back off maternity leave, we'll be doing a community mentor training. We'll have our 9/11 Day of Service, which is First Responders Appreciation Day, Make a Difference Day in October, Family Volunteer Day in November, and kicking off our youth service program in December.
Prior to opening the floor for questions and comments by the members of the board, I, I want to recognize Ms. Bachmann for a second, because she's, she's doing a truly extraordinary job with Volunteer Starkville. As she noted, the state keeps track of volunteer hours in communities all over the state of Mississippi. And last year, not only did we log more volunteer hours than any other community in the state of Mississippi, but we doubled the number two community in volunteer hours in the state of Mississippi. And that is a credit to the work that Ms. Bachmann and her board, and all of the volunteer organizations that Volunteer Starkville works with, and the job they're doing in our community. Lastly, I'll just say, Ms. Bachmann, you get a gold star for coming to the meeting in the ninth month of your pregnancy tonight, and you get a double gold star for using every second. Questions or comments from the members of the board?
I would just, Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Ms. Bachmann, thank you so much for what, for all of the work that you do in our community. And I don't see you before you have baby Taylor. Congratulations on becoming a mom.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Further questions or comments?
I just, again, I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Bachmann, for all the hard work that you've put in this organization and the growth that we've been able to see over the last three years. So thank you for all your efforts. We appreciate it.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Bachmann. Our next public presentation will be by Dr. Jessica Teck from the STEM Education Program recently launched with the school district. You may. And Ms. Teck, or Dr. Teck, I'm sorry, you, you will have 10 minutes as well.
Thank you. Very good conversation. I'm ready.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. And Mayor Wiseman, you have seen this presentation, so you'll see it again. I just wanted to give you an update on some education programs that have been happening in the Starkville School District as a partnership with Mississippi State University. Actually, this is our ninth year for some of the programs, and if you have students in the public schools, they have most likely been through either the YES program, or the Starkville School Science Club, or the Starkville Science Olympiad, and we've added a few new programs. So what I want to do to you, for you tonight, is give you an overview, and then hopefully sort of entice support from the community, because I think we're at that stage now that I want to move forward with trying to get community support so that we can further the economic development and the quality of life in Starkville through education programs. I am an assistant professor in the Department of Wildlife, Fisheries, and Aquaculture at Mississippi State University, and I do want to recognize a partner of mine who's been working with me in this endeavor, Mr. Kenny Langley, who also works at Mississippi State Mississippi Next is a program that, that we've developed over the past few years. However, we've had programs in Starkville for a number of years, since 2008, actually. And so the Starkville Science Club is an after-school program that lasts for 40 weeks, and really it's conservation science-based. However, it's very rigorous. It's almost college-based level, and we have fourth and fifth graders that are included in that program. In 2011, we added a youth environmental science program. We call it the YES program, if you've ever heard of it. This has been based at Henderson Ward Stewart. This year, we've moved to Sudeth Elementary School with the space issues that have occurred with the redistricting. But we also use the Larry Box Conservation Center out at the Knoxby Refuge for a lot of our programming, and, excuse me, we've outreach to well over 5,000 students through this program, through the Youth Environmental Science Program. It's very hands-on, it's very academic-based, and what we do is we use programming through literacy to increase education in all areas, math, language arts, social studies, and science. In 2014, we added the Science Olympiad, which targets middle school students, and also this past year, high school students, to get engaged in more competitive science programming, so that they can be globally ready to enter the job force. This past year, we added, as a literacy measure, something called reading. It's in our nature, and that was targeted to third-grade students. This was a legislative act about three years ago, through Governor Bryant, looking at literacy issues starting in the third grade. And unfortunately, there were students that were held back last year at Ward Stewart because of reading competency issues. We also do science summer camps through the university and the, and the school district, and we'll be offering those again this summer. We have about, actually, they filled up in about two hours when we opened the registration this year. So we feel that there's a need, a definite need. Mississippi Next encompasses all of these programs, as you can see on your handout. It's the umbrella for all of the programs that I just showed you, and it's, what we're trying to do is prepare Mississippi's future generations through engaging hands-on science programs that gets them interested and engaged, and that's our, that's our main focus. We also want to increase their outlook and their attitudes on science by making it very student-centered and collaborating with other entities in the community to enhance their environmental literacy. And what I mean by that is we go to Plymouth-Bluff Environmental Center, we do water resources, we work with the Army Corps of Engineers, we work with USDA Wildlife Services, we, we work with US Fish and Wildlife Service to bring some of these science topics to our students. And we want to eliminate any performance gaps because of background or performance levels, and so that's very important to us as well, and that's why the YES program targets every single student in the district right now. And of course, keeping with the Starkville relevant and rigorous theme, we want to build life skills and career readiness. So these, this is some of the pictures of our activities. We go to the vet school, we bring students from MSU to the schools. We also take them around the state. This past year, we went to New Orleans for our spring break trip for the Science Club and exposed them to some different cultures as well. We have a website, which I encourage you to visit, mississippynext.com. It is still in, being populated right now, but we highlight a lot of the things that we do. We had Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries, and Parks here to bring an actual alligator to the school as we kicked off our reading program, and the book was on alligators and crocodiles. So we thought it was a good enhancement and incentive to have these students read, and we do that throughout all of our book topics. We bring wildlife artifacts, or creatures, or special speakers as incentives to have these students read their books. There is a need in Mississippi. I don't think I have to spell it out. I think that you are probably aware of some of the lagging grades that we have in Mississippi. We have moved up from 51 to 50, 50th in the nation. As far as education goes, I do see progress with that, but we have a ways to go, and the, the area that's highlighted is, is just showing that our maths, our math and science scores are lagging, but particularly our science scores, and the achievement gaps between racial levels seems to be the most disparaging. In addition, by 2018, Mississippi will have a tremendous need to fill almost 50,000 STEM-related jobs, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And so these skills are in need, and we would hate to outsource to other states. We want to get our students' career ready right here in Mississippi, so that these jobs can be given to the workforce of Mississippi. There's a lot of literature that's out there, a lot of studies that show that states can really build a strong foundation economically by supporting education. And so I implore you to, anytime that we need assistance or support to help support our programs, we would love to get the community involved with helping these programs, at least through support and acknowledgement that these are happening right here in Starkville. We've outreach to over 8,000 students with a total of, excuse me, over a quarter million contact hours to these students through science. I can, with pride, say that several of our students this year are going to Ivy League schools, students who have come through our programs, and that's really a source of pride for us. There is a clear education and economic partnership. I know Hattiesburg has explored some of these possibilities, and I think right here in Starkville, we are at a critical juncture as well. We have all of the resources that we need here, especially with the university in our backyard, to really move up in education, economic, attract families here that, that really can help build the community as well, and industry. Our, our results from our programs show that we have taken students from the advanced level in 2012, when our programs were just in their infancy, there were only about 11.3% of our fifth graders that were advanced in science in 2014, that went up 23.8%, and that was during the first two years of our program. The Mississippi Department The Mississippi Department of Education has not published the 2015 scores yet, but we're hoping that it shows even more advancement. Of course, we cannot say that that's the only thing that's caused those scores to go up. We have incredible teachers and a great superintendent's office, so it's a, it's a very good partnership. But also, we've shown to decrease those gaps between genders and races as well, and getting all of our students engaged and also excited about science. And I think that's the first step. So, we would love to have more partnerships on our board. The school district's wonderful. We've got Plymouth-Bluff. We've got US Fish and Wildlife Service. I would love to have the city of Starkville also be a supporter, and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Teck. And I will just note, I don't think you talked to any about your handout and those of you, I know you can't see this, but it, it's really impressive. It, it shows the two-year turnaround numbers in fifth-grade science test scores. And for those of us that look at education test score data from time to time, turnaround numbers like this are really, really hard to come by. So, I, I, I think that shows the success and the effectiveness of your program. Thank you for the work you're doing in our community.
We would like to continue our work. There's a lot to be done. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Cool.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions or comments from the members of the board?
I just have one. Dr. Teck, do, do we have enough data yet to know if it's increasing graduation rates or ACT scores, or is it just too early to tell at that point?
Well, the students that have gone through our Science Club and our YES program are actually now in high school. Our, our first year of Science Club, those students just graduated this past year. And I was privileged to go to, to that graduation. I, I don't think that we are seeing those results yet, but I know that we will. I know that we will.
Very good. Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is the second public hearing pertaining to the proposed amendments to the code ordinance of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, specifically Appendix A zoning article seven, District Regulation Section T, Section 7.3, Building Form Section 7.4 Building Use, and 8.4 Building Use. And a reminder before I turn it over to Alden Walker to introduce that the action item associated with this matter has been removed from the agenda. Alden Walker, would you like to introduce?
Sure. We've had the, the T districts in place for now, I guess, almost four years. And at the last, our last board meeting, we had a public hearing to talk about some changes that need to occur. I believe we do have some changes that need to occur. We may not be quite ready. We're having, we're meeting with consultants that are looking at comprehensive plan, and talking through, discussions with Community Development Department today, and the mayor. We may have a few issues that we still want to work out. So, at this time, I think probably the, the best thing to do is pull back from specific language that we're looking to, to change and, and continue the discussion. And I would love to, to hear if people would like, from the community, would like to have some discussion tonight, so we can continue that as we, as we move forward to looking at a, a future actionable item.
Any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any questions or comments? Seeing none at this time, I'm looking for public comments. Anyone wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone now wishing to make comments?
My name is Johnny Mora, local attorney. More or less clarification, I'm assuming we're not having the second public hearing tonight.
We are having the public hearing. The public hearing's been noticed.
Correct. I, I understand that. But this is not going to be the second public hearing. It's being tabled, correct?
This is the second public hearing.
The, the public hearing and the action item are, are two different things. So, per the board's policy, an item becomes eligible for adoption after they've had two public hearings.
Correct.
So, it is eligible for adoption tonight, but the action item has been removed from the agenda. However, the public hearing was previously noticed, and by law, the public hearing must go on. So, this is the second public hearing.
Right. Then I've got comments then. Couple of things. I'll be honest with you, I'm not much for reading the newspaper. And I was at the last board meeting and, and saw this item on the agenda. And, and, and there was really only one thing that, that alarmed me was that we're, we're looking at a proposed amendment that's going to take the T districts down to three-story. And if you do that, you might as well not even have a T six and a T five. You're basically turning everything into an R five district, residential five district. Now, I know there's going to be commercial on the first floor, which makes that a little bit different from R five. But I would implore the board not to really take any action on this in the future until the board's ready to adopt an entire comprehensive plan. And the reason for that is, I, I know personally, and can't divulge to you who the parties are, there's at least two projects that, that are on the horizon that would be completely undermined if, if everything was reduced to three stories. They would not occur. I mean, it's just not going to happen. It's not economically feasible. If you take projects down from five stories to four, or from four stories to three, not only are these projects not going to happen, you're going to reduce the value of these landowners by at least 40% because you can't get as many units on a piece of property. So, not only are you going to see a decline in values, you're going to see a decline in our tax base because these projects are now not going to be feasible. I mean, we're going to go back to what we had. And the whole purpose of the T districts in the first place was to get our density up, so we would have the connectivity between MSU and campus. And like I pointed out at a prior presentation, the traffic count's down about 40% on University Drive. The sole purpose of this is to get traffic count up on University Drive, have the connectivity between the university and the students. And like I also presented at a prior meeting, the closer these kids are to campus, the, the more likely we are to keep these students. Now, in the past, I mean, we had some objections to a certain project that we were working on by some of the patrons in the cotton district, Mr. Camp specifically. And after that, he filed like five applications to downzone his to try to basically circumvent our project. I'm not, I'm not going to be around the bush, okay? Now, thi- this would have the possibility of destroying our project because it's not feasible at a three-story. And I just don't think it's right to make a change in the ordinance when we have a comprehensive plan coming down the pipe. It's really only going to benefit one person, and that would be Mr. Camp. Because then, nothing would be over three stories like his. And he was the, he was one of the biggest promoters of the T six district. It was, and I quoted that to, to y'all in the paper. So, it appears to me that this is just nothing more than another angle to try to get it back to the way it was in order to prevent any future development, like, like we're seeing now. I mean, it's been a boon to the city. And in fact, we're considering a change when a significant number of certificates of occupancy haven't even been, been issued for the projects that are under construction. Over 90% of the units that have been built for rental are already rented. Deposits are made. They're not even finished. The residential, the gin, most of those have been sold, and people were buying those just off pictures. I mean, they were pre-construction contracts. So, the worst thing I think we could do is stop our momentum because one person doesn't like what's going on, especially when they were highly involved in the front end. And I think the board needs to be really careful not to scramble these eggs, because once you do it, it's going to be hard to unscramble, which is almost virtually impossible. So, ask the board to exercise patience and wisdom and let this play out with our comprehensive plan, because there's more going on with this than I think the board really knows. And these are really complex matters. And I think we need to be extremely careful how we move forward, so, so we don't make a mistake that we can't fix. And I really didn't even want to get up and comment tonight, but since that appears to be, and it's not on the agenda for a vote, I just felt like I need to have a say. And I, I'm going to be honest with you, multiple people say that they wanted to come and speak, but they were scared to because they were afraid it might impact what they want to do in the future. And so, I hate they feel that way, but, you know, you just got to get up and say what you got to say sometimes, and just hope that it's well-received, and that we're all looking for what's best for Starkville, because that's, actually, I've lived in the country 20 years, and I've been back in town for three months now. So, I'm, I'm now officially a resident of the city. But you know, I grew up here, spent my entire life here, other than two years at Ole Miss. And I just think it's important that we do what's best for our citizens.
Your time is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further public comments?
My name's Alvin Turner. The old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You, you all don't get the, you all don't get the call that the president, the vice president gets. What they doing? Do they know what they doing? You are the governor body. Your leadership has to be very careful. Because when you start slamming people and all that, you can go to jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll now ask for any concluding comments. Alden Walker?
Dan Camp gets a lot of credit and a lot of blame for just about everything that happens in this town from a development standpoint. I will tell you that Dan Camp had absolutely nothing to do with me bringing forward this T district changes. I was prepared tonight to come back and say that T five, four stories, all the way around, with the exception of Loomis Drive and Colonel Moldro. T six to go also be four-story. I'm going to let that marinate, but I'm going to tell you that I do not believe that we are going to lose projects. I do not believe it is going to jeopardize the project that I, along with other members of the Community Development Team, have been working diligently with you, Attorney Moore, and your clients over the last year to try to see that project happen. The primary reason it's not happening, and the other thing that we have to consider, is that when you build four stories or five stories on these lots, especially the ones in the cotton district, we might as well say we're going to allow eight stories. Because the lots are so small that when you build that tall of a building, you're going to have to have structured parking more times than not. And just like on the project that Attorney Moore is talking, what made that project unfeasible is the two structured parking lot, two structured parking garages, and the significant amount of earthwork that were going to happen. I agree. The T districts have been a boom. I continue to want them to be a boom. But it's like anything else. It can't be a code that you put in place for 60 years and that you don't change. It has to be a living, breathing document. There are clearly things that are working very well with the T districts. There are some things that need to be massaged so they continue to work better. So, as we move forward, we are going to be left with projects that are going to be long-term contributors. That is my only intention. It is not to look out for the best self-interest of an individual or somebody in the community. It is to look out for what is in the ultimate best interest of our community. I believe these changes that I'm talking about are with that in mind. And I am perfectly willing, as I pull this off, to continue the discussion, to see how we best make those changes. But let's be clear, there still needs to be changes made to this ordinance. It is not perfect. If you walk down Russell Street and you want to say, "I'd like to be able to go in this building, but I can't because there's six feet of elevation change that I have to get into," then the code's not working correctly. There has to be change. If you understand what the true urban environment is and how you put it together, this code has a few gaps in it that needs to be built. Thank you.
Alden Winn?
Oh, oh, Attorney Moore, thank you so much for coming forward tonight. This weekend, after this measure was, our agenda went out on Friday. I've received numerous telephone calls about concerns. And I'm sitting here on my iPad, and this gentleman, and I'm going to use his, no, I won't use his name because he sent it to us, and he didn't say that I could use his name. But he sent us an amazing email. And in it, he speaks about how much money that our city can use, can lose when we do something like this. If our board had embraced this measure tonight, it's kind of like Ole Miss and Mississippi State playing a game, and Mississippi State is winning the game, and Ole Miss decides to change the rules of the game in the fourth quarter. So, that's what you would have had with this, because we already have deals on the table. One of them is about 60-something million dollars on University Drive. I'm so ready to see that come to fruition. We have a school district here. And no, I don't have a child in a school district. But I say all the time that I'm concerned about the children that are in our school district. And I understand that our school district is going to have to have some money. Projects like that support our city. Under the term, tenure of this board, and Mr. Sanders, if you will, will you stand? And thank you so much. Come forward. On the, under the term of this board, am I correct that we add more than, are at $200 million in development projects since this board has taken office since 2013? Thank you so much. That's $200 million, and our city has never seen the likes of it. We are growing and blowing. It gives me great satisfaction when I attend a Mississippi State game. And there are sometimes people there that haven't been here for years, and they say, "I almost didn't recognize when I come back." There's a need for this. There's a demand. And I won't support anything else that talks about taking any money from Starkville in terms of this ordinance. And tonight, that item was taken off the table. And I had something here that I wanted all of us to see. And it was far greater than that sign that I put up on the screen. It is an interesting something this tape, as it relates to a developer in the cotton district area. I call no names, so I won't get any blame. But I would have liked for you all to have seen this tape. And what I'll do is, I'll just keep it for in the meantime. And I take pride in doing my homework, and this tape is one of them. Thank you all so much. Mayor, you have the floor.
Alden Carver?
I'll save Mr. Moore's comments. We're probably right on, on the line with where I feel the pulse of the city is, and especially the development community. I've had a lot of guys and ladies reach out that just feel that this would be detrimental, not only to the overall valuation of their property, but also maybe future growth in the city. And also, in layman's terms, maybe the last and the top floors, a lot of times where they make their profit on a project. As, as it may be, some of these projects are already in the works. And I think it'd do an injustice to cancel these projects because of this inadvertently tonight or the next meeting. From a housekeeping standpoint, I would say I had two or three specifically in the development field that couldn't make it. But if we could have a third public hearing, just give the public one more opportunity, the individuals couldn't be here tonight, before I assume a vote on the next meeting. So, that would be my only recommendation, is to have at least, give the public one more, you know, a time to come up and speak on this matter. So, thank you.
Alden Walker?
I agree with that completely, Alden Carver. I think the reason this was pulled tonight was to, to have more input. And before there were be any actual item, I agree completely that we should have another public hearing.
Thank you.
I would also just like to comment that we've had 200 million. We've heard that number repeatedly, that Alden Winn has asked repeatedly, almost every meeting, how much money we've developed in Starkville. And I think that's great. I also think it's hard to understand, when you look at the logic of that, when you sit in a comprehensive plan meeting, you say, "I'm not going to vote for a comprehensive plan because development's too hard to do in Starkville because of sidewalk and landscape ordinance." Which one is it? We've got more development happening here than we've ever had. The people that are coming from out of town are not complaining about the sidewalk and the tree ordinance. Come on. Let's be clear. So, we are booming. Yes, this is not going to impact the projects that are already on the board there. We are moving forward. I'm ready to let this go tonight. We have plenty of opportunity to discuss this in the future. But we should also not just listen to hear what the developers have to say about what's going to make their projects work. We need to hear a broader perspective. I've talked to a number of developers today. And when you talk through them, and they understand the, what's actually happening and what's being proposed in the ordinance, almost all of them come around and say, "We think that would be a better solution for moving forward." Now, have more public hearings? Yeah. Let's talk to people that know what they're talking about, when we can make these decisions, that we can move forward in a way that's going to be meaningful. I yield the floor.
Alden Winn?
Yes. When Alden Winn, Alda Woman Winn, or A2 attends a comprehensive meeting, and you're talking about leaving out development possibly in talking about leaving out development possibly in west of Starkville, something that could impact my ward and the ward of Alderman Carver. A2, Alderman Whip, Alderwoman Whip, is not going to vote for it when you're talking about leaving west of Starkville out. It's not meaningful. On page 44 of the comprehensive plan, there was discussion of a sentence, and yes, it was taken out about growth in the west of Starkville. Having said that, you take it out, but the intent is still there. Again, A2, Alderwoman, and Alderman Whip will not vote for any comprehensive plan that doesn't include growth for all of Starkville. We need growth for all of Starkville. There are some problems with our comprehensive plan. I don't deny that. It has a way to go before it needs to be approved. Mayor, you have the floor at this time.
All right. I'm going to take this moment to do something I should have done about two comments ago, and that is to remind you all that we are in the public hearing on the proposed changes to the T District. We've veered into some comments that became a little personal. We veered into comments about an unrelated matter in the comprehensive plan. So at this point, I'm going to ask everybody to focus it back on the subject at hand, which is the proposed changes to the ordinance. Alderman Carver.
Just from my information, Alderman Walker, could you explain, maybe I had a couple of people ask me, and I wasn't adverse, as I needed to be on the commercial side of that as far as, I guess, could you explain to us and myself really how that, you know, affects us and affects... Is it first-floor, commercial-only, has to be? I mean, that's what somebody told me, and I didn't think that was correct, but...
Excuse me. I'll see if I answer your question and what you're asking. Currently, anywhere in the T Districts, there is no requirement for anything to be... The intent is for it to be mixed-use. There is no requirement for there to be commercial or residential. It can be all-one-use or mixed-use. There is no... Currently, there is no requirement. On our primary corridors, I do believe we have, if we're going to build a building on University Drive or Main Street, good chance that a piece of that at least needs to be commercial. So one of the changes in this was to look at, and this was talked about a lot, maybe the language isn't there yet, but what was proposed, that was in the packet, is 70% of the total light coverage, or excuse me, of the total that faces the front street of the facade would need to be non-residential use. So as an example, let's say you had a 100-foot-long building that faced University Drive. 70 feet of that 100-foot of that building, of that facade, would have to be commercial-related. Now, what is not in there, it does not talk about the depth of that building. So if you have a building that is double-loaded, you could have 70 feet across that 100 or complete 100 on the front, and then residential units on the back. So it doesn't mean, it's not 70% of the gross footage, it is just of that facade. Yeah, and that is, would be limited to University Drive, Main Street, Highway 182, which all are already commercial and corridors, along with Russell Street, or would be the primary. Anything else, it doesn't mean that you can't do commercial on Maxwell Street or Page Avenue. It just doesn't require it, doesn't mandate it. And so, you know, is that the magic number? I don't know. We'll have discussion about it. But I know what would be hugely detrimental. If you let out-of-town developers who come in and they are only looking to do student housing only, and they want to build four stories or five stories of student housing with no commercial or retail component on that first floor, on University Drive, Main Street, Highway 182, and/or Russell Street as that continues, that is a huge, huge missed opportunity for our community.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the members of the board in conclusion of the hearing on the proposed changes to the T Districts? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, that will conclude this, the second public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances. The next matter you have before you is the consideration of a resolution declaring... Did I hear a motion?
Yes.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of a resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, to issue general obligation bonds of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, to support the development of a new industrial park to be located near the intersection of highways 82 and 389 in the municipality. Together with any economic development project to be located in such industrial park, the industrial park project, which industrial park project was recommended by the Golden Triangle Development Link in the maximum principal amount of $7 million as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I really enjoy the relationship that we have with Joe Maxx and how his straightforwardness is to be appreciated, but I say, Mr. Higgins, the ball is in your court, and to Ms. Amos and Mr. Deason, thank you for all that you do. Anything else we can be of service to you, just let us know.
Alderman Little.
I was wondering if Mr. Higgins could give us a brief update on how we've progressed since our last meeting? Update the public. I know we've spoken briefly about it.
Yeah. Good question. I think it'd be pertinent before y'all vote tonight on the notice of intent to issue bonds, if you had an update. We're supposed to be back at your last meeting, we had some nuts and bolts, we had still worked up, but I think, I think the document that's in front of you, Mr. Latimer, Chris Pace, and all the folks, or I think we got something that you're comfortable with, Chris. We told you the last time, we said there's still two outstanding issues that everybody needs to be aware of. You know, we have the cultural resources. We've got a price tag from Walt DeKalaka with Headwaters on what that'll take to fix, and I think we reported back to you at that time that for us to move forward on this, we needed to go to the landowners, and they needed to adjust their price to cover, if not all, the cost of those cultural resources, a big portion of them. I can confidently say in front of you tonight that that's working well, and we think that's going to be well within hand. So we think that the landowners are going to cooperate, we're going to, we're going to get an adjustment of price from them, and that's going to, that's going to take that problem kind of off the board. The other problem that we noted, and we found this out when we started working, is the gas issue. I will tell you that we've had two meetings in about a week, Mayor. We met today with Brandon Presley and Mike Taggart, the Highway Commissioner, Public Service Commissioner, as well as Atmos Gas. Michelle was in the meeting today, and Mayor was in the meeting, and Jack was in the meeting. Mr. Trainer couldn't be because they're on their, at their conference. The meeting before that, Mr. Trainer was in attendance. I can tell you that I think Brandon Presley has been a, Mayor, I hope you'll agree because you've been in those meetings, has been, has been spot-on with this. He is coming with his problem-solving hat on, and I think between he and Atmos, they've got a plan for how we can do this. And today, we kind of worked up a plan for a right-of-way acquisition to be taking place, maybe within the, let's say, from about July this year till July next year. They should be able to give us a commitment that once we get a tenant that's ready to go in the park, they'll be, once they get that right-of-way and acquisition environmental done, they will be able to run that gas line within six months of a project committed.
Of next July?
Yes, sir. That's the tentative, that'd be the tentative date. We said, matter of fact, after, after the meeting, we had, we had a call with Atmos again, and they said, "Let's make sure we're all on the same page." And I said, "Well, after tonight and Monday," I think that's going to be green light for you guys to get on your horse. Mayor, I think they'll be in front of the Public Service Commission in July with a request. Remember, a lot of what these publicly regulated utilities have to do like Atmos is they have to go to the Public Service Commission, and they have to get their blessing, and there's a process they have to go before. They're intending to do that the month of July. We won't come back on the public hearing on this until August the 2nd. So hopefully, that will be, that public, that public meeting that they have with, with the commission will be done, their plan will be outlined, and then we'll be able to come back in here hopefully and green light go. Now, the six months is a good date as we, as we understand it. We've talked to the people at TBA that manage the economic development up in Nashville and said, "Is that a reasonable time?" They said, "It's more than reasonable because you can't get a building built in six months." Not, you know, not 100, 150,000 square foot building. You can't get started, get the building built and occupied within six months. That's also, if you'll remember, the same amount of time that Ford County's telling us that they'll have their, their line tapped, they'll have their structures built, and within six months of a contract signed by the, by the company, they'll get them powered. So we're consistent in that our gas line should be run within six months, our power should be done within six months, and we think that's a reasonable amount of time for a prospect to expect it. That's for the first deal. After, after the first deal, it won't matter because both of those improvements will be done. But we've had a lot, we've had a lot, we've had a lot more good news than bad news since we were before you last. Again, Mayor's been intimately involved, Jack Wallace and Mr. Trainer representing the county, and then, then Jack representing OC to Wallace, and Michelle and Steve. Steve wasn't at the meeting today. But those, that's the group, in addition to Joey and I, that's been there for y'all, representing this, and Mayor, if I've misrepresented, please, please correct.
No, the only thing I would add to that is Cornerstone Governmental Affairs was also instrumental in the early going of those conversations, and that needs to be noted.
Yeah, yeah. They've, Atmos has come, understanding what needs to be done. Mr. Presley has impressed me immensely the last two, last two meetings. I mean, he's, he's taken charge. The meeting with Mr. Taggart was, was today, was in the event that we need to get on some highway right-of-way. What would that look like? What would be allowed? And we needed some direction. He had his engineer, and he met with us all together today in this room.
Thank you for the update. That's very positive news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Alderman Carver's motion, and Alderman Little, I did have you for the second on the motion. The city clerk asked me to double-check. Please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of five in favor with two against, the motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I may be recognized.
You may.
Mr. Mayor, I think we got, the only thing we got left, we're back over here on the page of utility. This request of agreement between Starkville and Aiden and Water Association, they've been set out there for a long time, and we're going to be here a long night. Could we move this up on the board business, please?
Would you like to reorder?
The first thing on the board business, reorder.
What item is that, under utilities?
Up under utilities...
That item three?
Item three.
Item 11L3, the proposed revision to, by Alderman Vaughn, is to reorder the agenda to place item 11L3 as item B under Mayor's business. Alderman Vaughn, is that your proposed revision?
I'm going to put it on top. May I, may I?
That would be the next item, the item B under Mayor's business.
All right.
Is that your proposed revision?
That's it.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? All right. Seeing none, the next matter before you is a request for approval of an agreement between the City of Starkville and Aidenton Water Association for Emergency Water Connection and Joint Billing of Aidenton Water Association Water Service and Starkville Utilities Sewer Service. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of an agreement between the City of Starkville and the Aidenton Water Association for Emergency Water Connection and Joint Billing of Aidenton Water Association Water Service and Starkville Utilities Sewer Service as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter you have...
Same move.
Did I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of a resolution amending the resolution adopted by the mayor and board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi on June 7, 2016, relating to the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds, Series 2016A, in the principal amount of $3 million, and to the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds, Series 2016B, in the principal amount of $2,400,000, both of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, both to raise money for the purpose of providing funds for acquiring, renovating, equipping, and furnishing the old City Hall building and associated real and personal property, including without limitation, the repair, patching, overlay, and striping of the building's parking lot located at 101 East Lampkin Street in Starkville, Mississippi, to house and facilitate the operations of the Starkville Police Department in order to change the sale date for shed bonds from July 7, 2016, to July 19, 2016, and for related purposes as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of seven in favor with zero against, this motion passes. The next matter you have before you is the consideration of the approval to accept the bid from Starkville. Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve the acceptance of the bid from Starkville Ford for two Ford F-250 XL 3/4-ton crew cab two-wheel drive pickup trucks for the City of Starkville Landscape Division in the amount of $28,121 each, and a total of $56,242, and to authorize lease financing as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Question. How many total bids do we receive on this? Yes.
Bids we received at the 9:00 a.m. deadline was noon in Starkville.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. At this point, we have been here for nearly two hours. The next item, since reports from department heads will be lengthy, without objection, I'm going to take us into a brief recess. Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Let's take a brief recess.
Car, you don't like to stay while we're having a meeting?
Mady will now come back to order, understand Alderman Walker wants to reorder the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under, I'd like to move under 11 Department Business Planning, items B through F, move those up to where they'll be next, right before discussion of non-personnel new budget items.
The proposed revision by Alderman Walker is to reorder the agenda placing items 11, 2, B through F as items B through F under Board Business. Alderman Walker, is that your proposed revision?
Yes.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection seeing none?
Are you saying B or D?
B. Okay. The agenda has been so reordered, the next matter before you is the consideration of the 2016 CLG grant for the historic resources. Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of the 2016 CLG grant for the historic resources survey and national registration nomination of Octavia Gardens as presented by the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, and authorization given to the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the City of Starkville with matching funds in the amount of 50% for $5,000 or whatever is less, with said funds taken from line item number 001-190-600-300, professional services as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alderman Whip. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
I have a question. Was this requested by members of the neighborhood, or is this... What was the history behind this?
The history behind the, the district is the Store Preservation Commissioner was looking for new projects, and Octavia Gardens is a mid-21st-century neighborhood, and...
Good neighborhood.
Yes, very good neighborhood. My dog walks me through, through there, uh, when, uh, when I lived in the area, so I'm very familiar with Octavia Hall Gardens. Uh, but, uh, and, uh, there was outreach to, uh, the neighborhood by, um, plenty, uh, excuse me, Historic Preservation Commissioner, Aunt May, and we had support from the local neighborhood, and so we made an application to the, uh, Mississippi Department of Archive and History for CLG grants. Estimated cost of the survey, uh, inventory is ten thousand dollars. Uh, we received a fifty percent grant match of five thousand dollars. So if the, uh, Board so chooses to accept the grant, um, essentially we give it for half, half price.
Very good. Just for a matter of note, I live on lot number one and two of your Octavia Hall Gardens original plot, so, no further questions, Mayor.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter you have before you is the consideration of request for a landscape waiver for, uh, from parking lot tree requirements for the renovation of the Starkville Police Department.
Okay.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of a request for a landscape waiver from parking lot tree requirements for the renovation of Starkville Police Department as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any question?
I have a question. So, Buddy, I, I have a little reservation voting for a landscape waiver for a city when we deny landscape waivers for a lot of contractors. Could you explain a little bit as to the reasoning behind, and is there any way around this request?
Well, by placing, uh, the, uh, the trees that would be in the parking lot area, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but to happen, the waiver is to move the trees along the street front.
Well, the, the parking lot area is really becoming sort of storage for the patrol cars, and if alternative two, where the parking lot is gonna be addressed, is accepted in the renovation package, then there'll be building a wall, there'll be trees on the outside, uh, but there will not be room for landscape aisles on the interior, and also have the current stock patrol cars stored inside the security area. So, the trees are actually, we're moving them from an area that they would essentially be hidden, but moving, moving the trees to, uh, the sidewalk, so...
You can see on this image, uh, the area that's directly in front of the big white box here, that's, uh, the police station. This landscape part is part of base bid, and then if accepted, uh, alternative one, I believe it is, this wall will be built, the two slide gates, for ex, controlled access into the storage lot, and then, uh, trees placed along that western property line, which these trees alone exceed what the requirement is for that area.
So, to answer your question, we're not really, we're bearing from the ordinance because we're not placing the trees in the parking lot, if you will, but we're going up and over and beyond what is truly required as far as a plan can.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, Alderman Little?
Can you speak to the fence?
Uh, the fence is a wall. Uh, I briefly looked at it on the plan. I think the columns are made of, I believe, concrete to look similar to the architectural style of the building, and then in between is metal panels that have horizontal louvers. You won't be able to see through it, but it will be a complete screen that will kind of match the architecture of the building.
In my talking with the chief earlier today on this, he, he indicated to me that it's gonna be open from near business hours for the public, for public use.
Um, that wasn't what the conversation was with the architects. No, that wasn't anything. I think the part that would be open would be for sure is, uh, for accessible is the ADA parking spot back here.
Captain Hotlow, can you speak to that at all?
Uh...
Does that mean to put you on the spot? I don't know, are you aware?
Yes, sir. It takes me today, uh, the same thing that you, uh, mentioned. Also, um, being open on Sundays for people in church, but after five o'clock it'll be closed, um, because of prior incidents.
You've had some prior incidents, so it'll be for security reasons?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 Uh, I have five in favor with Maynard and Perkins against. Motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the request, uh, PP sixteen oh six, for preliminary plot approval of four A seven lot subdivision at the southwest corner of the intersection of Old West Point Road and Rose Perkins Evans Drive. Discussion. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the request of PP sixteen oh six, for preliminary plot approval for a seven lot subdivision at the southwest corner of the intersection of Old West Point Road and Rose Perkins Evans Drive as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of approval of the request PP sixteen oh seven, for preliminary plot approval for a ten lot subdivision located directly south of the intersection of Yellow Jacket Drive Road and Vine Street in an R-three zone. Discussion.
So, approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of a request PP sixteen oh seven, for preliminary plot approval for a ten lot subdivision located directly south of the intersection of Yellow Jacket Road and Vine Street in an R-three zone as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of a request for PP sixteen oh...
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the request for PP sixteen oh eight, for preliminary plot for subdividing and replating two parcels into three lots located on Highway twelve west, on the west side of Stark Road intersection, with the parcel numbers one oh three one dash zero zero dash zero zero three point zero zero and one oh three one dash zero zero dash zero zero four point zero zero in an R-three zone as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Hold on, hold on, Mayor.
Uh, just, just housekeeping, I believe, on that one. Uh, and it does say in an R-three, but I believe that should be in a C-two.
C-two, be correct.
Just to clarify that, that that should be in, in a C-two zone and not an R-three zone.
Without objection, the clerk will make that change, uh, as a clarifull change to the motion that's already been made. See, no objection, the clerk will make that change. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion of non-personnel new budget items for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget year by department heads. As you will recall, uh, the Board has elected, uh, to, uh, to, uh, handle the budget proceedings as a committee of the whole, and, uh, Alderman Maynard is the chair of your committee of the whole in his capacity as the chair of the budget committee. Uh, he has asked for department heads to make non-personnel related presentations this evening. Uh, at this time, I, I will turn the direction of those presentations over to Alderman Maynard.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's mainly, we had had some discussions earlier in the year and decided to push all of the personnel-related items to the first meeting in Jan, in July. Um, so I wanted us to get a feel for what budget requests may be coming from department heads that were over and above their budget that was allocated to them for this year. So with that, um, probably start with Tony and the court budget.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board.
Thank you.
We have a, uh, small budget, as you know. Uh, as long as our current budget remains the same, uh, we feel that we can meet our non-budget needs for the upcoming fiscal year. I would ask that we make sure that we include the current software payments. Other than that, uh, we don't foresee any changes of the number.
Now, Mr. Rook, your, your software payment this year was?
Thirty, I believe.
Little less than thirty thousand dollars. That actually came out of a different budget line. Board, I would request that this year, when we, um, adopt Mr. Rook's budget, that we actually allocate that software request for that Tyler software under his budget line, so it's clear as to, to where that money's coming from. Um, so if we could, could make that change, clerk, if we move forward with that, that would be great. Any other requests, Mr. Rook?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Halbert?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman, Board of Aldermen. Um, the non-personnel budget need that I'm requesting is a five hundred dollar increase in the supply line. The purpose of this in, increase is to efficiently run the human resource department in such a way that it provides structure and the ability to meet the needs through managing the city's most valuable resources, which is its employees. By implementing a welcome packet that consists of souvenirs, the City of Starkville name and logo will be on it, would not just promote the City of Starkville as a good place to work, but also a good place to live. And also, I'm asking the increase for employees' ID badges, and the reason for those, um, I have several reasons. One is for visual identification of staff, not just for employee-to-employee identification, but also for a citizen. When we're out in the community, the citizen can know that we are an employee of the City of Starkville. Also, for security reason and benefits. We have several vendors that, um, offer benefits and discount to the city employees, but we don't have a way to show that we are an employee besides providing them with our checks up. So with a employee ID badges, this would be great. And also, by increasing, um, the supply benefit, this, this provides a positive human resource service experience for applicants and for employees. For our employees are the key to the City of Starkville reputation and success.
Yes, Alderman Win.
Thank you. Ms. Halbert, thank you so much for doing this. When C. L. Adams was here, I said to him, "Our employees need identification cards." It entitles you to many discounts, like car rentals or what have you, when you're government official or you're out of town. And most people are not gonna take their checks up with them showing someone when they're registered, when they're checking in at the hotel for that little discount. So I want to say thank you, and it's much needed for when our employees are out in the field and they're on other people's property, because some of our employees don't necessarily wear uniforms. So thank you, and I commend you for doing this. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Ms. Halbert? So, in addition to your budget, five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
See if we can find that. Thank you, Ms. Halbert. Mr. Peters?
Five hundred as well?
Yeah. Boy, Mr. Peters did have a presentation in your packet.
I think everyone had in their packet, right? Uh, this shows that within our, I'm gonna start with the sportsplex first, uh, with the flooring of the carpet that we have there, it's, it's really getting a lot of foot traffic, and it's something that should have been done, I feel that should have been done to begin with, to replace that with tile. Um, take the, take up the carpet and replace that with tile. Uh, approximately now is coming in at about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars. Also, with our Moncreef Park, it needs some very, very bad, attention very quickly. Uh, we have, uh, equipment, uh, the play equipment that's, it's rusted out, also that's outdated and has been pulled from the market many years ago, and all that needs to be updated real soon.
And the total on that was?
Uh, the total for the play equipment runs thirty-four thousand, and I'm gonna say thirty-five thousand for that, and approximately thirty-four thousand for the, uh, removing of the tile and pla, replacing the tile, which you, we can use out of two percent budget.
And boy, we will have to look at the two percent budget projections before, obviously, we can make a decision on this, see exactly where it's going. I, I will say that I played on the playground equipment at Moncreef Park that's there currently, and I'm not a spring chicken anymore.
Okay.
It has been there a little while, so, at least fifty years, so...
Well, it's, not saying it's outdated, but it's time to be played, need time to be changed.
I think every fifty years, you should probably look at replacing playground equipment, yeah, so...
Mayor, I'd like to see a cost estimate, too, on the carpet. I know it's industrial carpet. It probably could last a lot longer than a residential application, but instead of the thirty-four thousand show, how many years has that carpet been in there? If you, is it an old four complex?
It's about eight.
Seven?
Eight years.
Seven. Just give that cost estimate as well.
Okay.
I'd be a little hesitant to just jump out and replace the carpet at this juncture also due to the age, and, um, maybe the right person hasn't professionally cleaned it. Um, we may need to add some limitations on what can be brought in there. But acoustics is something you need to consider. You put tile in that big, that big open area, you're gonna have a big, huge acoustics problem, and you're gonna have to need rugs or something to kind of kill the sound and echoes in there. So, I think I might give it a little more thought before I just jumped out and take what it sounds like, maybe the easier way, you know, as far as just mopping, but it's gonna be a huge expense, and we might want to see what we can do as far as cleaning, uh, some professionals. Just my thoughts. I yield.
How much it costs to clean it? And how of, how often do you clean it?
We get professionally cleaned once a month. Uh, that run us about a thousand dollars. Then weekly, we have to rent the, um, which is about thirty dollars a day rental, the, uh, to, to spot, to spot clean it.
Yes, Ms. Win.
Mr. Peters, I heard this, but I want you to confirm it. Last year, when the Board denied approval for you to travel to Las Vegas for some trip related to Parks and Rec, I understand you all lost some type of accreditation. Is that true?
Yeah, through the national accreditation.
Tell us a little bit about that, 'cause we need to know that. I had to hear that from someone else. Will you enlighten the Board on that?
We, uh, through our national park and recreation conferences, we have to, we attend those conferences, and that's how we stay nationally accredited with the, uh, National Park and Recreation.
So you don't have national accreditation?
Not this year.
And what would be the procedures for you to get that back?
We attend this year.
Okay.
Pay, pay the fine for it.
Okay, thank you. Adieu.
Mr. Carver?
You said, you said it's twelve thousand a year for carpet cleaning?
Yeah, we have thousand a month for the professional clean of the entire building.
Okay, just not the carpet, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Peters? Thanks, Mr. Peters. Mr. Clements, do you have any?
Mayor, Board, my department will not need to make any new requests, uh, for non-personnel budget this year. If we maintain our current budget levels, we can accomplish everything we need to in the next fiscal year.
Amen. Amen.
Mr. Clements, at, at a point, I think it was two years ago, we discussed an additional off-site storage facility, and we still currently do not have that capability, do we?
We do not. Um, all our storage is onsite or practically onsite. It's downtown. Uh, one of our, uh, big goals for next year is to buy that appliance, which we can do with our current budget levels.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. City Clerk?
The city, the finance and administration budget, um, will be, was sufficient at the current rate. The election budget will need to be increased, um, approximately ten thousand dollars, um, as it is every four years, to pay for the, uh, election workers and supplies.
Ten thousand?
Right, yes, sir. And I, I feel like that will be more than sufficient for a, a normal election.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gandy? We just bought you two brand-new trucks now.
Very much appreciated.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Um, I appreciate the truck that the Board just approved. I appreciate the truck that the board just approved. And our non-personnel items that we're gonna be, that I'm gonna be soliciting, will be seeking, will be additional pickup trucks. Additional pickup trucks will be needed for litter control. Right now, on the sanitation side, the trucks you just purchased are for landscaping. On the sanitation side, we have three trucks. Mr. Ware is dedicated, one is dedicated to Mr. Ware. One is used, the other two are used for our city route and for our disabled route, where we have labors in each one of them, they go to various ends of town, or to Main Street and collect trash, and then they take that garbage back to one of the, yes, sir.
You're talking about a pickup truck?
A pickup truck.
Okay, thank you.
And they take that back to either one of the garbage trucks that's out on the route, depending on where they are and where they're picking up, or they bring it back to one of the trucks, the garbage truck that's, that our, our backup truck that's stationed at the, at the facility. So we will be looking for additional trucks. Another knucklebone, as you know, when the board, or you may not know, but when the board fixed a rate for everything going into our rubbish landfill, that $5 flat rate, we became bombarded with the amount of rubbish that is put on curbside. When it was free, we didn't have that problem, because residents were able to take it into the landfill at no charge. When we affix a charge to it, that, that they were carrying into the landfill, they started setting curbside. Free, one knucklebone, one that we have was more than capable of getting it off the streets. Now that it's not free, and there is a $5 charge, we, we can't keep up with it with one knucklebone. So we are gonna be looking to purchase, or asking for the board, for another knucklebone. Tippers, as you know, our recycling grant, our recycling bins or ends that were purchased with the grant money, we are going to be putting tippers on the back of our four residential pickup trucks, I mean, garbage trucks, I'm sorry. And, of course, completion of the landfill expansion, right now, we only have, that the consultant's fee was right at the $23,000. Still have no idea of what that expansion, or for that sale is gonna cost, so whatever that is, then I'll be coming back to the board on that. Now, with all of that being said, I'm not looking for any additional increase to my budget. Everything that I've just said to you can be accomplished within the footprint of the existing budget. I have several pieces of equipment that have been paid off, that frees up debt service, that frees up funds, so there is no need for an additional increase, and if the budget stays flat, all of this can be accomplished out of the existing thing.
How much are the four tippers?
We're looking at about, just guessing, about $5,200 each, and we're putting on four.
How are the garbage trucks doing?
The garbage trucks, we're doing fine. Nothing but some, with them, our front, working out the kinks, because they are, we do have one that's a 16, but other than that, the issues that we have had have been minimal, all covered under warranty, and it's just a matter of getting it to the shop to get repaired or replaced.
And we're still servicing those on that regular service schedule?
We are, we have, excuse me, we have maintenance service on everything that we have now, the new sweeper, both front loaders, and all four rear loaders.
What's your equipment look like at the landfill down here? You say nothing about the equipment at the landfill?
Well, the reason I didn't put anything on here for the landfill is because until we can just decide on where the expansion is gonna take us, I really don't know. From the consultant, um, excuse me, I'm gonna assume they're gonna be making recommendations as to what equipment is gonna be needed for that expansion. As you know, we are, we only have two staffs out there in one full-time, two full-times and one part-time staff. So whatever that expansion's required, I'll have to come before the board to discuss that, whether we need to bring a crew in, what that fee is gonna be, whether the board wants to move forward. It just depends on how much money the city and county is willing to spend for that expansion. So until, until then, I'll move on, I can't say exactly whether we're gonna need to purchase additional equipment, or whether we'll need to bring a company in to complete that expansion, and then, once it's completed, our crew will take over from that.
And at this point, we really don't know what it's gonna cost to close that sale and open a new sale.
Exactly. My last conversation with Mr. Cunningham was that, because we are, because our facility footprint is for the entire expansion, and there's, it's not like closing a sale, it may be closing a portion of that sale. It's just a matter of how we can, the holdup on my end is where the, we're gonna have to dig any part of the existing sale and move it, because it is out of compliance. So it may require us to take a different route to get into that sale, may be the feasible thing, but right now, it's just too early to take it, because they're still doing surveys and, and getting back their, their information from the samples that they take.
Cost on the knucklebone, any idea?
Right off the top of my head, I think the one that we just paid off was about $190,000. And we just paid off $190,000, well, we happen to pay it off in the next 30 days. $190,000, a knucklebone, $140 on a piece of landfill equipment, and that's all in this budget year, and a $210,000 front loader. Those all coming off of debt services. So those funds that were budgeted for, allocated for this budget to carry those payments will actually be freed up, should we, which will take care of anything that we need that I've just mentioned to you.
Any other questions for Ms. Gandy?
As far as, basically with the rubbish, you said to the landfill now, it costs you $5, or it used to be free. And with that, so with Calvin, basically with that truck, is he riding around, just riding street canvassing areas, or is he, basically, I call him, you know, we call him, and then he's really good about going and getting it that day. How does that work? Is he out looking, too, or is he?
Right, right, well, right now, we're, we're still short a driver.
Right.
We're still short a driver, which means that my knucklebone driver is actually driving a garbage truck, which, which means that we're running behind on that. Now, we also have our summer workers. And we're, so Mr. Ware is going between making sure the summer workers are where they need to be, and trying to pick up rubbish while our knucklebone driver is on the truck. And then, when he gets in, they switch off.
Have there ever been talks about maybe a possible $3, $5 charge? Basically, if somebody calls an alderman or the mayor and comes out there, I mean, I think that's an okay, pretty good deal to get several yards of limbs picked up. Um, you know, because what you've done is you've lost the funds from the people who are now calling in their, you know, calling in their load to be picked up, and then also, you've exerted the staff to go out and canvass the areas and look for it and pick it up. So it's kind of like you're costing yourself money on the, on the tail end, and you lost money on the front end, from what went, I understand that. Maybe, do you think that it was a poor decision to, to charge the $5, because you've now stressed your staff, and you, you know, I know you're short staff? That's, that's one possible solution. The other would be to, to recoup that cost through a $3 pickup fee. You know, I mean, have y'all ever had any talks about that, or has there been any kind of, because, you know, it's something that's stressing your budget?
Well, I mean, I, I haven't talked, talked about it with any of you, that, that is one option, but it's, it would be adding another fee onto the, onto the citizen, you know, when it comes to adding additional fees.
Well, you're pretty much double-tax yourself, I mean.
I know.
So, I just want to specifically say, like Calvin, I mean, specifically, I think he's done a wonderful job over the years, I've been really impressed. So, thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome. I think the staff are doing a great job to try to accommodate our city. We are growing, and that's some of the other issues that we're having, we're having growing pains where, on the litter side, where the trucks would come in and would give us at least an hour, or hour and a half to two hours of litter control, then, because our neighborhoods are growing and the trucks are staying out longer, so we just need to grow with the city, you know, and then we can give them the services that they deserve.
Carpet bags need to be ordered when?
Should the board select, I would suggest that we start the process no later than mid-July, so that we can get those ready, give the company time to make them, so that we can actually have them in-house. For the last two years, we've been behind schedule. So if we can start that conversation and get them bid it out and what have you, so that we can actually have them in, I would like to have them in by September, so come October 1st, we're rolling with them. So I would say we could, next board meeting, if the board saw wheels, I have that on the agenda.
Or, or we could not buy them and pay cash for a knucklebone truck.
Well, whatever the board say.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
I also, while I'm here, if the board will allow, you asked me to come back before you with information about our commercial business, so if you will allow me to report to you on that.
Please.
As you know, we experienced some loss during our equipment problems and what have you. I've made contact with everyone that we've lost. A lot of them are interested in coming back and seem enthusiastic about coming back to the city. However, they are in a contract at this time, and can't get out of that contract, but they've all said that they would be willing to consider coming back to the city. I've assured them that we are back fully staffed, we're well-equipped and able to provide the many services that they need, so it's just a matter of them working through the existing contract.
Thank you for that, Dale. Now, I'd like to say, I would be getting some expiration dates on those contracts, and maybe just have a spreadsheet so you can follow up. Sometimes there's an evergreen clause in contracts that, if they don't, you know, they'll just roll over and continue on if they don't address it. So be proactive and stay ahead of that.
Well, one thing that I did discover during the process of talking to some of those vendors is that we do have some that left for open containers that we don't offer, and in the near future, that would be something that I would want to look at, is offering additional computers, open containers. What I'm looking at now is options of offering those containers without having to buy a $190,000 truck. There are some options out there that we can use, existing pickup trucks to deliver these open containers, so that would be something that I'll probably get more information in, come back before the board.
Want to talk a little bit about price undercutting, Dave?
Yeah, we, the prices are not that, they're not that much different, but the other companies have negotiating powers, of course, so they're undercutting our prices by about $5 to $10, and that's enough to make someone leave and stay, so that's what, that's what we're looking at. Our prices are not bad, as you know. During busy season, and, and it's just my preference, that when we have a lot of activity going on in, in the city, then I do bring additional staff in to make sure that the city is clean. So we do give courtesy during football games, to keep the university clean at some of the hotels, just so we won't have trash on the ground when we have company in, in town. So we do give courtesy dumps that some of the other companies won't give. So that itself is an incentive for them to come back as well, because what I have been told is that these outside companies will charge them anywhere from $50 to $75 for it to come back for an additional dump, and with us right here in town, can give a courtesy dump within the next five minutes, you know, if they call.
You answered my question, and I was finna say, when they, when they undercut you like that, you gotta, you gotta give better service.
Yes, sir.
And so you answered my question.
And, and I apologize, I have one more thing. The board also asked me about the double pickups, to report back on the double pickups where they're picking up on Tuesday after the holiday. And I waited, because Martin Luther King Day was the first one, not a lot of residents knew about it, and so it was a fairly easy day, we didn't have any issues. Second day was President's Day, we came in, we were having some issues, we had lost a couple of drivers at that time, so we kind of struggled that day. We managed to accomplish it, but we did it right at 5:00, so. And then, our most recent one was Memorial Day. Same thing, the only thing that fought us on Memorial Day was the heat. The heat, you know, slowed the crew down, it was, it was hot, so they were not rushing, but we still managed to collect everything on that Tuesday and to be finished at 11:00. And that's all I had.
Y'all be doing that again on the 4th of July, or the 7th, the 5th, I guess?
Until the board tells me otherwise.
I got a question for the budgets here.
Yes.
The holiday report, have you got an update on when we should see that?
I just talked to the clerk in the break, and she said she thought we would get that report next meeting, yes.
Budget Chair, excuse me, how many more departments do we have to go?
Mr. Kemp, Mr. Yarborough, we may let Mr. Goff, Mr. Outlaw slide tonight till their, their counterparts get back.
Got you, because, Mayor, I want to be recognized at the next item. Okay, go ahead, I'm ready.
Mr. Kemp, we just need to make sure we can overlay every street within the current budget that you have.
Well, good evening again, Mayor, Board, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to let you know, I, I feel like, you know, we do have a lot of operational needs, as every department does in the city, but I understand it's also gonna be a very difficult year budget-wise, so we will, we will be okay for another year if we maintain our current budget levels. We have a lot of aging equipment, and our crews do a good job of trying to maintain that equipment and extend the life of that, but at some point down the road, we are gonna have to at least talk about some equipment replacement, and those are some high-dollar pieces of equipment that we use every single day, and, but things that are utterly necessary for, for us to do our work. But also, that, that would not include any kind of capital improvement, I know that's really just a separate discussion that the board will have to make from a policy standpoint on overlays and drainage and that type of thing, but operationally, the engineering and street departments can be.
Thank you. Any questions?
Budget Chair?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Refresh my memories on, on Yalay Jackin Drive, when we were starting to breed.
Yes, sir. The, we're doing a box culvert, they are actually being made right now up in Aberdeen, they're being precast, they will be delivered here near the end of July. We have, the initial delivery time was actually mid-August, and we talked to the, the precast company, we may have to make some changes to the design to shorten that time, because the August 17th is our date when we want to get that road back open. It's the home, first home football game for St. Ohio, and I'm not gonna say the road is gonna be perfectly paved and striped and everything's perfect, but our goal is to have the road back open to allow traffic on it on August the 17th.
City Engineer, of course, you and I have talked about this, because we went and looked at it several times, but I, my wish is, and I know I'm talking to you, but I'm talking to you to, and talking to the board members, is to see airport road paved. It is a critical area. When so many visitors come into our city, and football season coming in, and a lot of business personnel come in, and a lot of elected officials come in, so it's an entry point to our city. I would love to see that paved. Of course, I had some discretionary spending monies, but that was not enough to pave it, and I have another area in my board that I'm very concerned about, and that's Old Highway 12. Alderman Carver sent me a text a couple of weeks ago, and talked about some potholes that were out there, and of course, we had those done, but that's concerning to me, so I would love to have some money. And again, I'm speaking to you, but I'm talking to the board members to do that, because that, that airport road definitely needs to be paved or something. There are some rough areas out there, and I have a little bit of discretionary spending money, so we're gonna take care of those. Thank you. I yield the floor, Mr. Budget Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Kemp. Mr. Yarborough?
Good afternoon, Board. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
This year, with the current budget we have, we'll be okay, but at some point, we have to make a decision on air packs. That's our vital life piece of equipment, we have to have, our guys have to go into the house. If they fail, then our guys will die, so we got to make sure we get that taken care of. Currently, they're over 10 years old, they need to be replaced at some point. Right now, I'm working to get a grant to get that taken care of, so hopefully, we get that done, get the grant, and then we won't have to have any money, so.
How many units?
They have 25 units.
How much are they per unit?
Forty-seven, forty, well, total of $118, excuse me, $118,000.
Total?
Total $118,000.
We might need to look at replacing, depending on if we get the grant or not, but if not, then at least look at replacing the percentage of those every year.
And right now, the grants, we are, they're issuing money for the grants right now, in the third round, so, about 20 rounds, so hopefully, we get involved, and if we get that, we have the, all of the packs repaid, man, so that'll be taken care of.
True.
And then on our flip side, on the packs that we have now, we can actually turn those in for funds, we can turn them back into the company for re, to be refurbished for volunteer departments and things like that, so we could get some rebate money from that, so. Other than that, I think that's a big thing. We're also working, just to give you an update, on a grant we... We also working, just to give you an update, on a grant in May, excuse me, in March, you allowed me to write a grant for, the safer grant, which is to replace our personnel. They will start issuing money on that grant first of next month. So hopefully, we'll know something about that and that will be for eight five fives to fill our stations, fill station five up for a total of two years. And after the two years, we could reapply for that grant for another additional two years. So we may get stretched it out for four years, maybe two years or four years with that personnel, so.
And when would you hear about that grant again?
We'll know about it starting next month. It takes about a two-month process, but starting in July, from July probably to September, we, we have some time in there. They issue money out every, every two weeks.
Is there any city match on that grant?
Yes, it'd be a city match. It would be a city match of, I think, about thirty thousand dollars. So about the cost of one five fiver to get eight five fives.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. And we'll wait on electric and police unless y'all just want to present tonight. You need a, you need a new station. Yeah, okay, we, I think we got that. Were you prepared to present? Oh, okay, buddy, I'm sorry, I looked over you. Did you have anything tonight? Yes, I'm sorry.
I have four items to request. As you know, the Mississippi Department of Archives and History has offered and the board has accepted a fifty percent grant match. My standard line item for, for professional consulting is five thousand dollars. Requesting an additional five thousand dollars to cover the difference for the Arctic Girl Gardens inventory. When the product is finished and we turn in the grant application, the city will receive that five thousand dollars back as part of the grant. I'm also requesting nine thousand five hundred dollars for IQ Works software. That is a web-based community development software package in which will allow applicants to submit applications online, pay online, allow tracking of projects online, allow the public to see what projects obtained building permits, would allow city staff to review site plans and other documents from their desk. So someone from the fire department, someone from the legal departments are not gonna have to drive to City Hall to review and approve a site plan. And they can do so from their desk. Seven thousand dollars is the annual fee for the software. Twenty-five hundred dollars is for taking seven years of back data and bringing it into the new software. I'm also asking as part of this request for a five percent software technology and training fee to be assessed to each building permit cost. So if the permit costs the applicant a hundred dollars, then the, the technology fee would be five dollars. So beginning in fiscal year 2018, the software and the costs would make, would be self-sufficient. So I could take out the line items for education and equipment out of my normal budget and fund it by the special fund to pay for software and education and training. So it is a cost upfront, but over the long run, it will save the cities some money. It will also lead to a quicker approval time for permits. My third request is for a American with Disabilities Act transition plan. In order to receive federal funds for transportation and other grants, it is required by the Department of Justice and the Department of Transportation to have an ADA transition plan. The overall cost for that transition plan is fifty thousand dollars, with thirty-five thousand dollars of that being for transportation related items, such as ramps, entrances, sidewalks, and fifteen thousand for the parks ADA transition plan. And my fourth item, I don't know if it's, you consider it an added expense, but I request that seventy-nine thousand and sixty dollars that was set aside for the rewrite of the development code be forwarded to next fiscal year's budget for the rewrite of the development code. I do not see that being completed by end of the fiscal year. And those are the four items I'm requesting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What was the total on that?
Seventy-nine thousand dollars and six, excuse me, seventy-nine and thousand and sixty dollars.
Any questions for, from the board?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. The next matter before you is the consideration of the South Park Plaza lease agreement.
May I be recognized?
Would you like to introduce?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to approve of the South Park Plaza lease agreement as presented. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor. In speaking with the police chief as of recently as today on this matter, his full intentions all along have been to go to Synergetics. That was his plan before this train went down a couple of the tracks, as recently as the last couple of months. He indicated that they've been out there with the narcotics team since '06 and his plan was to put the investigative team out there here in this transition. They're already wired with the internet, wired with the capability of the internet, direct tie-in, and we'll be just running a couple of additional lines there. It is gonna be some added expense, but that's where he wants to be. And he does not want to get in the middle of the politics and I can appreciate that. So he's gonna, you ask him, he'll, he'll do whatever we, you know, whatever the board desires. But that was his original plan and he's had a plan in the works for some time now. And I'm gonna support him on that, in that direction.
Alderman, win.
Mayor, I too will be supporting Chief Nichols tonight. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor of Alderman Perkins' motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of three in favor with four against, this motion fails. The next matter on the agenda, if I can follow my markings. I have item two under engineering, is that what you have?
Right, item two on the engineer.
Is a request for approval to declare the nineteen, motion has been made by Alderman Walker to declare the nineteen ninety Dodge Dakota one BFL two-six XOL five-seven-three-eight-three-six and many for tractor UE oh-one-oh-two-one as surplus with authorization to advertise on gov deals and are moved from the city's inventory as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard, Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda?
Mayor, is there any way that you can bundle the rest of the remaining one motion and just a blanket approval for all of them?
In the past, the city attorney has advised against that, so I will let him opine on that.
Alderman Carver, you guys can attempt to consent agenda. The problem with bundling is it forces somebody to either vote all in or out. If something is right in the middle, that you can pull that out.
I'd like to make that motion to bundle these together. Nothing else is contentious tonight that I see on this. There's also an easier way and a more efficient way. Obviously, it's politics in play. We're seeing it on the consent agenda. We're seeing it on items added at the table, which is the vice mayor's personal pet peeve, pet peeve. But with that, I mean, this is, other than a proven point, unless the vice mayor can, can give a good explanation for one or two of these that he may want to bring off for any personal reason, you know, I would like to blink them all together.
Second. All right, so we'll note in the minutes that the city attorney cautioned against making this motion and then the motion was made. The motion is to approve the following items. Now, everybody follow along, I'm about to read out a lot of items, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the city attorney a question before you read that?
Now, you may, is it a point of order you'd like to make?
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Perkins is recognized for a point of order.
Mr. Attorney, of course, you know, basically, he's trying to go in the back, go on a consent agenda. Are you approving that legally?
No.
So if he have a motion here where all the items are bundled together, I mean, that is tantamount to a consent agenda, so is that legal?
My opinion is that the board has discretion to enter into a consent agenda, but bundling items outside of a consent agenda, there's no express authority to do that. And I think it creates problems because items can be tucked in the middle that force an all or nothing vote on, that an alderman can claim that they didn't have the right to consider that specific item.
So if this motion were to pass and that means, number one is that it's a point of order, then that's not legal because we can't do a consent agenda unless all the aldermen agree. So, and secondly, you agree with that, then secondly, which is against the law. And then number two, if I have a, if I want to discuss each item, then I'm at liberty to do so.
The only thing I would, I would clarify with what you just said is that the law is silent on bundling outside of a consent agenda. So I'm not saying that it's per se legal or illegal. I'm just saying that the law allows for a consent agenda or a one-on-one itemization of items. It doesn't expressly disallow or allow bundling. My opinion is, when you look at the AG opinions and say that each alderman has the right to carefully consider any issue, that this would likely violate those opinions.
So just to recap, you know, make sure I'm clear, so to only have a consent agenda, what he's asking, you have to have unanimous consent. That's been your prior opinion, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So the second part of your question, that any lawyer can talk about any item they want to, that's.
Any alderman, right, right. So in other words, if I want to just bring this up in each matter of an individual, discuss it if I can.
Yes.
Okay, right. And so, Mr. Mayor, that's what I'm willing to do. City Attorney, that's only if this motion fails, correct?
Yes, I mean, the board is in control of the agenda by majority vote.
And I, having some more time to reflect on this and hearing the city attorney's forceful counseling against it, I'm not gonna entertain the motion at this point in time because I, I have concern that if this motion was adopted, the legality of everything you adopt could be questioned and I don't think that's advisable. Now, that being said, you always have the right to make a motion to appeal the decision of the chair when I've made a judgment call. So if anybody wishes to appeal that decision that I'm making, I believe appeal the decision of the chair, is that a simple majority?
I think it is.
By simple majority, you, you can overrule my decision, but the, the decision I'm going to make is I'm, I'm not gonna entertain the bundling motion.
So the more efficient way would be just to do a consent agenda in a more legal way?
Yes, there, there's no issue with a consent agenda. The only issue with a consent agenda is all seven of you have to consent to the consent agenda.
That sounds like a common sense thing to me.
Yeah, and I will offer another avenue if you want to explore this matter further. You adopt your own rules. Now, you have adopted in its entirety the standard code of parliamentary procedure. But you can add to or replace that rulebook in any manner that you see fit. They are your rules. So if someone wants to investigate ways that you might modify your rules and have those conversations with the city attorney, I would recommend that as a, a means of offering different procedures to get through a, a, a meeting quickly.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, I'll be contacting you this week to find a way, basically understand what's going on, I believe.
That's my idea.
Just basically a more efficient way to close out the meeting. We'll go through the last twenty-five things, just rapid fire. Parker has the college and everyone out, it's terrible on you, it's terrible on the local government, and it really gives the city a black eye. You know, we speak a lot about efficiency and effectiveness and this is not the case here.
Alderman, win.
Okay, let me speak to this. I've received a call, Alderman Carver, from someone in your ward, who is an older lady, she's eighty-something years old. And now she can't watch the board meetings because they are so long and lengthy.
That's right.
I received a telephone call from one of my former principals and teacher friends over there in Ward Six who explained a consent agenda and I took time to explain what a consent agenda is, tree advisory board, and you only receive one person who wants to be on. We don't have, we don't need to be discussing that. That is something that is automatically gonna be approved. You only got one application on the tree advisory board. So that's basically what a consent agenda. Another something that it does, it jeopardizes our board. We have members that have, have to be at their jobs early, early in the morning, travel plans, and sometimes people are leaving the board meeting when we go into executive session and leaving us with four aldermen sometimes. It jeopardizes our board. I see no reason for us to continue down this path. It's je, it just doesn't look well for our city. I said it once and I'll say it again. My dear friend Mayor Smith has told me that board meetings start at five-thirty, at six-fifteen, he's at home. Councilwoman down there, Grenada, has told me they start about an hour and a half, they're gone. David Little can, Alderman Little can tell you about his friend down there, we are a better city than this. This just doesn't look well that we in here to nine and ten o'clock at night. I leave, you gotta think about your, for me, I'm a female, I think about my safety, it's dark outside, so this just isn't right. And you know, for the person that's doing that, you know, these members of this board, including I, we entrusted him to be the vice mayor and this is what we get in return. It just doesn't look well. One person is holding an agenda hostage and that is the person that represents Ward Six. It just doesn't hold well for our city. I yield the floor.
All right, the matter before you is the approval for the city engineer Edward Kemp to attend, did I get that last?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Yeah, you, yeah, you got the last one, that's what we have, here with Kemp.
Did I get the, the president of the board director?
Yeah, we had Alderman Kemp.
All right, a motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the city engineer Edward Kemp to attend the National Association of City Transportation Officials NACTO in Seattle, Washington, September twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, to be paid by the Brownfield Assessment Grant at no cost to the city as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is the consideration of making short Beatty a one-way street.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of making short Beatty Street one-way with traffic only allowed to travel northbound from Highway one-eight-two to Long Street and authorization for the street department to install the appropriate signage to make this traffic change as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, well, this came about where you had those speed bumps put on Long Street right there. So, so after you put the two long, two, two speed bumps there, they're using it as a cut-through street. And so I had the police chief and the engineer, we looked at it in order to try to slow the traffic because I was getting phone calls from the residents that live on that street. So we're going, in order to come down the street, make that street a one-way street, offer one-eight-two. And eventual, a whole Beatty, short Beatty, long Beatty, eventual will be a one-way street sooner or later. Edward and I, the chief and I, gonna look at that again and make that whole street a one-way instead of just short Beatty a one-way and other part of one-way, the whole street. Because long Beatty is a two-way, but actually it really need to be a one-way. That's why this is going on. After when you put those speed bumps there, it's cut-through.
Well, I would gather from that result that the speed bumps must be effective. I've driven over a few times myself, they, they get your attention. Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request, motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the city of Starfall claims docket for all departments, including the Starfall Utilities Department, as of June fifteenth, twenty-sixth. fifteenth, twenty sixteen, for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman when? Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have the vice mayor, oh, by a vote of five in favor with one against, and I have the vice mayor casting the dissenting vote, the motion passes. The next matter on the agenda-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of the May financial statements as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman when? Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is request for approval of a rental agreement with Pitney Bow-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of a rental agreement with Pitney Bow, Pitney Bow's equipment for a postage meter as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion?
I have a question. That's in your office, Mr. Clerk.
It's in the, it's actually upstairs in the entire building shares it.
Do you have any idea what we're spending on postage a year through that machine?
I can run a report. We break, it's broken down because every department punches in a code for their department. It's broken down by department.
Is it still pretty significant, the amount of postage?
Yes, some departments are. Of course, it uses a bit because they send a lot of theirs out with registered mail and so forth.
All right, thank you.
This machine is smaller than the current machine now, which is a little bit savings.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is request for approval for Kenesha Hendricks-
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of Kenesha Hendricks attending the Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen Deputy Clerk Awards Meeting in Biloxi with advanced travel not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is request for approval-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to apply, approve of applying for Homeland Security Grant for approximately twelve thousand dollars. The S F D would use funds for this grant to purchase rope rescue and rescue dive equipment at no cost to the city as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, discussion, and Chief, come on, I have discussion, next two items, please, As to the grant, just kind of give me some background about when you expect the grant to, application to be tendered, how long you think it'll be, and I do want to commend you for your leadership in terms of getting grants. I like to see these items come to the board, the engineering department, and the electric utility department to pass, and some, maybe some others, at no cost to the city. I like to see that. That's how we can save money. I think if we can have a better focus on that, we'll be a better city overall. So just kind of elaborate on that. We're going, once we get to the next item, you can make it come at the podium, just tell me about, about the grant application, the process, when will it be submitted, about how long you think it'll take for it to get some word on that.
The grant will be submitted, if it's approved tonight, it'll be submitted fourth Friday. I've been working on it a little bit on the side, trying to get everything situated. It's supposed to be in by August the first, but the quicker we get it in, the quicker we can get approval of it. It's a homeland security grant, so one-hundred percent grant, so no matching grant. We're putting in for twelve, rather twelve thousand dollars worth of equipment, rope rescue equipment and dive equipment. We found out, we went to Mississippi State for that, when we had that student get killed out there, that we didn't, we had rope, we got some good equipment, we don't have a rope long enough to reach the ground, so we had to come up with a different system to load the people to the ground, so this grant will be giving us rope long enough to reach pretty much anywhere on the campus we can be fishing with, so. Also, dive equipment, we have twelve guys who have dive certified, we come to the summertime, so people be swimming. In practice, we don't have anybody that died drowning or anything like that, but so we go out to all the counties to help out with dive, so that's what the grant will be used for. We will hear something back, we get it in, the quicker we get it in, so probably, I say within August, we hear something back by Alderman.
This is great. And Chief, also, in the future, keep us posted on the grant application with regard to the, to the matter of the grant that you're seeking for the new fire station five.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chief. Just keep, just stay standing, we're going to get to the next item.
Do I have a motion on that? Wouldn't you?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is-
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize Cornelius Hickman to be an intern with the Starkville Fire Department from July fifth to July twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, as a requirement for Mr. Hickman to enter the Homeland Security Program in Texas at no cost to the city as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir. He's going to be working?
Not so much working, he will be basically, he will be helping out some, doing some things, office work mostly. He's basically trying to get an understanding of the fire service.
Job shadow?
Right, job shadow, basically job shadow. This is a requirement for him to be into the Homeland Security Program at Southern Methodist University.
Thank you.
That's what we're doing with him.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I reiterate briefly?
You may.
And Chief, that's what I was going to ask, and very good that you're making this available, and see he'll be here, there for almost the entire month, and basically, he's going to be just doing this for a learning experience and no cost to the city.
Yes, sir.
Again, this is a very good item. You get some more items like this in the future, this tickles the vice mayor greatly. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is request for authorization for Mark McCurdy-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize Mark McCurdy to attend the National Fire Academy on August fourteenth, nineteen twenty sixteen, in Imexford, Maryland, for National Fire Academy Course Hazardous Materials Code Enforcement at a cost not to exceed five hundred dollars, meal, tickets, and travel as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a presentation of-
Move approval.
Oh, we've got to have the presentation. Ms. Halber?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Ms. Halber.
On May the eighteenth, President Obama announced the publication of the Department Labor's final rule updating the overtime regulation, which will automatically extend overtime pay protection to over four million workers within the first year that is implemented. Beginning Thursday, December, December the first of twenty sixteen, the standard salary level for exempt workers would increase from the current four hundred and fifty-five dollars per week to an annual salary of, I'm sorry, to a, to nine hundred and thirteen dollars per week, which is an annual salary of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Ms. Halber?
Mm-hmm.
You may. How many employees do we have that are going to be affected that are in non-exempt status?
We don't have any employees that's going to be affected that is in non-exempt status. So our current practice that we are following, we, we are okay with the new rule that's effective in December.
So we'll be okay in that new rule?
Yes, sir.
Potentially, if we had a department head that was under that cap, we would have an issue, but I think right now, we're safe with all of our department heads. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, follow up on that and say, as we proceed through the next several months for budget talks, as we get into personnel, if you could just help us keep an eye on anything that where we may cross that threshold, just please help us point that out so we can be aware of.
I sure will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Just a little housekeeping. I just noticed that I only have four of you left, but please, none of the rest of you exit the meeting or we'll lose quorum.
Mr. Mayor, this was brought before us in the mid-winter conference, so I brought this and spread it some of them around.
The, you're talking about the new-
Yeah, the new overtime rule. It was brought out in the mid-winter conference.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big deal, but we're in a situation where it should have minimal impact on us. The next matter you have before you is a request for authorization to hire Brighton Conley.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the hire of Brighton Conley to fill the vacant position of laborer in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department, subject to a one-year probationary period as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is a request for authorization to advertise-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the advertisement to fill the vacant position of firefighter as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is a request for authorization to hire a temporary full- Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the hire of a temporary full-time employee to fill in as a laborer in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits? Alderman Maynard, do you wish to-
Oh, no, sir, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter you have before you is a request for-
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of accepting both the Synergetics lease and addendum to lease two office spaces from Synergetics Property LLC in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars per month as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Let me interject here, I, I know this has been a politically charged issue, but this, this is space that the police department needs, yeah, and for the record, I was highly supportive of using the space that Ms. Spruill offered to donate to the city. I think it was a mistake to not accept the space. I might offer my recommendation at this point, and that is that we should take both, which is what I think we should have done all along, as the police chief has clearly stated, that they could use any space available at this point in time. Now-
Go ahead, I'll make that motion.
All right, motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of a lease agreement for, approve of the lease agreement for the South Park, approve of the South Park Plaza lease agreement as presented, and approve of the Synergetics lease and addendum to lease two office spaces from Synergetics Properties LLC in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars per month as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Yes, sir. I just think this is going to give the police department additional flexibility, and if they see they don't need the additional space, then we can make adjustments after that.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of three in favor with one against, this motion passes, and I think that is an excellent outcome to this discussion that has lingered far too long. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval to accept the low quote submitted. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of accepting the lowest quote submitted by Mitsubishi Electric Power Products Incorporated for a sixty-nine K V power circuit breaker in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to accept the lowest and best quote and purchase a one hundred A digital low resistance O H M meter for safety, ground, mechanical, and other from Garner Lumley Electric Supply Company as presented.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to authorize the acceptance of the lowest and best quote and purchase one hundred A digital low resistance O H M meter for safety, ground, mechanical, and other from Garner Lumley Electric Supply Company as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Mr. Goff, do you want to explain to us exactly what this position, this, I'm just kidding, Mr. Goff. You don't have to explain to us what this does.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for Stephen Wade and-
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of Stephen Wade and Corey Burke traveling to Jackson, Tennessee-
We skipped one, may I?
Oh, that's right, we pulled that, nevermind.
We pulled that one.
Yeah, that's right.
To attend the T V P P A line worker construction lab to June twenty-sixth through July one, twenty sixteen, at a total cost not to exceed three thousand, six hundred dollars for boat with advanced travel as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request-
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of Starkville Utilities advertising for the sale of non-functioning water meters as presented. Alderman, is that your motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. I have no business for executive session tonight, and I'm not aware of any, a motion to adjourn is an order.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to adjourn until July fifth, twenty sixteen, at five-thirty in the courtroom at City Hall located at one-ten West Main Street. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Please adjourn.